Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the SACHM Board of Education, Wednesday, March 24th. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for a moment of silence. Last week, we lost a member of our community who was very involved with SYSL. He was the president of SYSL. He impacted positively thousands and thousands of community members and children in our community. I'd like the moment of silence to be dedicated to Al McCucci. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Pelletieri for the We Are SACHM Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, sir. I'm going to jump right in. We have a big agenda tonight, so we're going to jump, start in with our student recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Butel to come in and speak on behalf of, we are recognizing six students, I believe, tonight. Mr. Butel, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Picarello, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Pelletieri, and members of the Cabinet. Tonight, we have some outstanding student athletes that we're going to recognize tonight. All these student athletes have received all Long Island and other academic and scholastic and athletic honors as well. So the first person we'd like to call up is Emily Concarney. Emily?
Allison, do we have a microphone for the students? As usual, I have questions. Emily, hold on right there, Mr. Butel. I know, but let's give Emily a moment to shine here. Emily, you are a bowler. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you like to bowl?
Yeah.
What's the highest you've ever bowled? Do you want to say? I don't want to embarrass you.
Two seventy-eight.
Two seventy-eight? Is that... Is that at one time, like one game, or you added up a bunch of games?
One game.
One game? What's a series called?
You total all the scores up?
Total up all the scores? So I think I bowled two seventy-nine once, which is a little bit better, two seventy-eight, but it was probably a series of games. All right? Do you have any secrets to being a good bowler?
No.
No? You just go out there and throw it down? That's it?
Yeah.
Do you look at what you're doing? Do you look and see where the ball's going, at least?
Yes.
Do you use the bumpers on the side? You know, they put the things in the gutters?
No.
No? I do that. Do you yell anything as you're throwing the ball down?
Sometimes.
Sometimes? Is it appropriate? Can you say it here, what you yell? Because I'm terrible at bowling. I need something.
I just say hit.
Hit. I'm going to try that. Hit. Do you say when you throw the ball or when it gets close?
When it gets close.
It gets, all right, I'm going to remember that. Emily, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
So Emily is a junior of SACHM North as a member of our combined SACHM girls team, and she received the honors of Newsday All Long Island. So congratulations, Emily, for that. Her coach wrote up a nice little narrative about her and would like to share that with you. Emily finished the season with a two hundred and seven point four five average and match points of twenty-five to six. Emily has proven herself to be a motivated student and athlete. She shares her passion for bowling with her family and friends. Emily has the drive it takes to be an exceptional bowler. As a fierce competitor, she always is looking for the next challenge and is always humble when she conquers it. She has shown great sportsmanship and continues to wish the best for her teammates as well as her competitors. As a student, she is interested in working with young children and molding the minds of the next generation. She participated in a program where she was able to work with and teach young children. Emily Concarney. Our next student athlete that we'd like to recognize is Grace Calabria from SACHM North, a junior. Grace?
All right, Grace. Do you bowl? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Cheerleading?
Yeah.
What, how's it going this year?
Um, we did pretty good.
Yeah?
Yeah. Uh, we finished our competition season. Now we're in our football season.
Your what season?
The football season.
Oh, the football season. Gotcha. Gotcha. Do you get to go to the games?
Uh, yeah, we have two games.
Okay. Are you having fun?
Yeah.
Is it a little odd this year, given all the circumstance?
Yeah, it's definitely different.
Definitely different, but fun being out there?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Grace received the honor of Newsday All Long Island First Team, and Grace has been a member of the Varsity Cheering Team at SACHM North since eighth grade. She has always displayed great strength in her tumbling skills ever since she joined the team and continues to push herself to get more. Sorry, I'm breaking the rules. Throughout the past four years, Grace has developed her skills in all areas and has become a key member of our team. During the season, Grace balanced practices while also attending the BOSI's program for nursing. Grace is a two-time Suffolk County Champion and a New York State Champion. Grace Calabria. Next student we'd like to call forward is Jenna Lucassio from SACHM North.
My mic's not on. Jenna, do you know Grace?
Yeah.
You do, right? You're on the same team?
Yeah, we base together.
You what, together?
Base together.
Base. Face each other. Face each other.
Together.
All right, everybody relax. I was going to guess that. You girls are supposed to be very strong, right? How many, how many pile up on top of you?
Just one.
Oh, goodness. That's good. That's better than a lot, right?
Yeah.
All right, good. You're having fun this year?
Yeah.
Is it scary?
No. It's fun.
Good, good. That's what we want it to be, right? Are you back at school now?
Yeah.
How's that going?
It's good.
Everything's good. You sound just like my kids. You get one or two words out of them. That's it. Congratulations. Are we going to hear about you now? Is it embarrassing when Mr. Butel's going to read about you?
No.
Good, good, good.
So Jenna is a senior, and she received Newsday All Long Island Second Team, and she's also been a member of the cheerleading team at North since her eighth grade year. During the past five years, Jenna has shown great strength in all areas, and is a key member of this team. Although her senior season was only limited to a month due to COVID, she stepped up as a leader to help guide the team to another successful season. Jenna is a two-time Suffolk County Champion and a New York State Champion. Next year, Jenna will continue her academic and cheerleading career at Hostela University. Jenna Lucassio. Next, I'd like to call forward Briella Russo from SACHM East, cheerleading.
Briella, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you so much. Have you seen the new field over at East?
Yeah.
How do you like it?
It looks good.
Okay. We have a new one at North also.
Yeah, I know.
That's good too, right?
Yeah.
You like cheerleading?
Yeah.
How long you been cheerleading for?
Like, seven years.
Any other sports or cheer takes up a lot of your time?
Just cheer.
Just cheer? Are you back now with us full-time? You are, right? You're a senior.
Yeah.
You've been back for a few weeks.
Yeah.
How's it going?
It's all right.
Just all right?
A little rough.
Go ahead, talk to me for a second. What's rough about it?
No, just the everyday is rough.
Being in school every day?
Yeah.
It's amazing. My daughter was not in school five days in a row for three hundred and sixty-five days, right? For a whole year. They weren't in school five days in a row. And on day three of her first week back, she was like, I'm tired. I don't know how I ever did this, right? So it is taking some time to get back. I mean, we're being, I'm being a little lighthearted with it, but it is tough getting into that routine again, right? You used to have kind of that break a little bit. You'd stay a little bit later in bed maybe or something like that, but there's a lot on you too as a senior, right?
Yeah.
You're doing all right?
Yeah.
How about your friends?
They're good.
Good, good, good. All right, all right, Briella. Thank you.
So Briella Russo was also a Newsday All Long Island Second Team recognition honoree. Briella has been a member of the Varsity Cheering Team for five years and has earned the title of powerhouse of the team according to her coach. She is a fearless competitor and has mastered every stunt asked of her. She also has the ability to push, motivate, and empower her teammates to be better each and every day, which made her an excellent team captain. Briella helped lead her team to top-five finishes this competitive season, placing fourth, third, and first place. In addition, Briella is a member of several honor societies and has received a Scholar-Athlete Award five years in a row. She also finds the time to perform community service at Stony Brook Hospital. Briella Russo. Next, I'd like to call up Cameron Lee.
Look, Cameron, you're a member of this Board of Education, and as another, you know, I'm not a member of the Board of Education, but I represent the Board of Education. I'm proud to be part of this Board of Education. I was proud to be at your football game last week where you rushed for three touchdowns and over a hundred yards in the first half. I texted all the board members saying, one of us ran for three touchdowns today. Guess who it was? But we all knew it was you, Cameron. Did you have any more touchdowns? Like, I had to leave after the first half because my son had to go to hockey. Did you, how did we end up doing in that game?
Oh, we won lower time, thirty-five, thirty-four.
Oh, my gosh. We were winning twenty-one, nothing when I was there.
Yeah.
What happened?
Stuff happens. They're a good team.
You are very fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Pretty simple, right?
Yeah.
A couple of times, you broke through the line, and you ran right through the safeties and just outran everybody on the field. Do you know your forty? Do you have a time in the forty?
Four-six-two, I think.
Four-six-two?
Yeah.
All right.
That was like, two years ago, though.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
I'm about four-six-one, I think. Four-six-one, so it's close. But, I mean, that's fantastic. What's that like, rushing through the line like that and seeing people there and just outrunning everybody to the end zone?
It's just fun.
It's just fun.
Yeah.
And then you play defense also.
Yeah.
Do you leave the field at all?
Not really.
Are you on extra points too in kickoff?
Yeah, I'm on a punt, extra point.
Oh, my gosh. Tell your coach to get you off at least for kickoff or something like that.
Pick off I'm off the field for, actually.
Oh, good, good. You're going to get at least five minutes of rest.
Yeah.
Proud of you. You really represent this board and SACHM really well. Thank you so much, Cameron. Proud of you.
Well, Cameron is a SACHM North Senior, and he received the News-12 Scholar-Athlete Award this past year, which is an award given out to select individuals from various school districts across the county, and that you're nominated by your coaches for this award. And it's really a distinguished award because you really have to earn it through the committee, and it's such a small pool that earns the award. So just winning that Channel 12 New Scholar Award is a major accomplishment itself and really speaks volumes about Cameron. But Cameron is a three-sport scholar athlete competing in the sports of football, wrestling, and lacrosse. All of his coaches have said the same thing about Cameron. He is smart, a hard worker, a team leader, a natural leader, and respected by his teammates. As a football player, he is a captain, a three-year letter winner, two-way starter, all-county team member. He rushed for two hundred and twenty-eight yards in his first game and over a hundred and seventy yards in his second game this year. In wrestling, he was a four-year starter and earned postseason honors. If this wrestling season was not cut short, his coach feels that he would have received all-county honors this past year. Lacrosse is yet to happen, but his coach is excited for Cameron and the season that lies ahead. He knows that Cameron will be the leader needed on and off the field. Cameron will be pursuing his college academics and playing football for Williams College in the fall. Cameron Lee. Also like to call up some coaches that are here with us tonight. We have Jaclyn Totoro from SACHM North Cheerleaders. Danielle Grisolfi from SACHM North Cheerleading. And Edward Gazinski from SACHM Bowling. If we could get the Board of Education and members of the Cabinet for a nice picture, that'd be awesome.
Welcome to stay if you like. And have a good night. There is one more student that could not attend tonight, but I do want to mention Nick Walker, who is, made the bowling combined team a SACHM East Junior, Newsday Athlete of the Week, Newsday All Long Island Team, bowled a three-hundred this year. You can imagine the questions I had for him, but we'll save that for next time. Okay, that was great. Thank you so much. Moving forward, I do, would like Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines, we have a presentation tonight around assessment, around Regents, around our no-harm policy. Can we walk through that, please, for everybody?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we're pleased to bring some information around the updates to state assessments and how SACHM is going to be tailoring that to the best of the needs of our students. I'm sorry. John's stealing my clicker. Thank you. Okay, so our Board of Education has been talking the past couple of meetings around state assessment, and tonight, we wanted to just bring you an update around that. We've had a considerable amount of conversation around it, but just to give you a brief overview and history around it. Last year, all state assessments, both Regents and three-through-eight state exams, were canceled due to the pandemic. This year, we've been sort of monitoring that and waiting to hear from the decision from the State Department in terms of what was going to happen for this state assessment year. The Department of Education did submit a waiver asking that we, we again be exempt from the state testing year. Unfortunately, the federal government did not pass that waiver, but did allow us to have some flexibility. Therefore, this year, the Board of Regents, although they have submitted a second waiver, and we've not heard back quite yet, overall, there will only be, for accountability purposes, Regents-wise, there will be four Regents exams given. That will be Earth Science, Living Environment, Algebra I, and the English Regents, and then three-through-eight assessments will only be for one day, and then as well as the four, grades four and eight, science assessments. There will be no performance. On top of that, in terms of our remote students, remote students are not required to come in and take Regents assessments at this time. However, as a district, we will, of course, advise our students to come in and take them if they have an applicable exam. And as well as the testing windows have also been updated. So that's just a brief history of what's going on right this particular moment. Okay, so overall, the state assessment changes. As I just said, we will only be offering, or the state will only be offering the four accountability Regents assessments in ELA, Earth Science, Living Environment, and Algebra. There will be no LOT exams this year, so there will be no Checkpoint A or B, and we also have learned that there will be no August Regents. Three-through-eight, again, there will only be a Session One for ELA and math. They did give us a window, and I'll talk about a little bit later on, what we've decided in terms of SACHM when we will administer that test. Again, no remote students are required to come in to take any of these assessments. However, we will advise our students that if they are able to, we would be happy to have them come in. And the NICE SLAT, the NICE SLAT is a state assessment only for our E&amp;L students. This is an exam that we would highly recommend our remote students coming in because this allows us to gauge their proficiency level and the services that they are afforded as an E&amp;L student. Okay, so now that we know that there's been some changes to the Regents exam, we also know that basically the state is, again, in alignment with how we are feeling, most districts are feeling, that they are not held harmless against that. So even though the four assessments are going to be administered, if a student is passing their class, then they are exempt and can file for an exemption to take any of the Regents exams in any of the areas that a student might be, be in their year of taken. Also, in terms of special education, if a child is exempt, does pass, this does not in any way change whether or not a child is able to remain up to grade, up to age twenty-one, should that be applicable to them. Also, in terms of some additional pathway assessments, we're going to talk a little bit later on about that, but all of this information will be going out to our community so that parents understand which Regents are being given, the exemption rules that they're allowed to have, and what will occur in terms of our final grades, which, again, we'll talk about a little bit. Okay, so what does that mean? My child will not be taken a Regents, or maybe my child, even though they're exempt, they want to take the Regents. What happens to their score? What could happen to their transcript? So even though, basically, a student may opt to take that exam in the Regents, we are, as a district, we are given some autonomy in terms of, one, if they say, no, I've decided I just, I don't want to take it, I'm going to apply for the exemption, then only E can, or an E will be put on their transcript. If the child decides that they want to take it, maybe they don't do as well as they would like. We are going to be offering also, or we also are going to be administering in our classes, those that typically take a Regents or a final exam, a final exam in all of these classes, so that the child can have the highest of the two. So even if the child takes a Regents, but the final exam is higher than the Regents exam, we can still have an E on the transcript, which means exempt. And basically, this is coming right out of the NICED testing Q and A. It says right there very clearly that any changes to the transcript, anything that we're looking to do, should be in consultation with the family and the student. So at all times, we would have communication with the family and the students, and again, all this information will go home to our families following the break. Okay, so some additional Board of Regents actions because of what has occurred. So for our CTE students, both BOSI's and then just our own SACHM CTE programs, students are exempt from any unfinished requirements. We know that this year was a very challenging year, hence why, again, we were not in favor of state testing, nor was the State Department. And so provided that that child and that teacher can show that they did fulfill their requirements, then they will be able to get that endorsement and graduate from that program. Honors and mastery designations as well. There is flexibility in the calculations for mastery and honors, and so, again, if a child and a teacher can show that that course was fulfilled, then those can be also put on the graduation diploma. And science laboratory requirements, I know we've talked about that in the past, and there was flexibility this year in terms of that twelve-hundred minutes for the laboratory requirement that could have been done virtually and other means, but again, if that was not met, there is flexibility around that. Okay, these are the assessment testing dates. Again, they gave us greater flexibility, larger windows. Grades three through eight in particular, the first day is on April nineteenth. When you look at ELA, that is returned pretty quickly after our break. We would be looking to the, that is a Monday. We would be looking to do that on a Tuesday instead. And you could see there that the Regents exams, if you looked at the original schedule, they were a little bit more sparse out. Now that we're only having four, they did condense that window. However, we will be still holding our official final schedules that we typically do in the middle school and high school, because, again, we want to hold our children harmless and still offer finals in all areas that they typically have. So this is where, sort of like the rubber meets the road. Now that we know all the state assessment information, we have been meeting with our chairs and our departments, directors, principals, to ensure that we give fair and adequate, hold harmless policy for our students. And so typically, there's either a final exam in, in a class, or there is a Regents if it ends in a Regents. This year, we have asked, and we've all agreed and talked about with our chairs, holding a final exam in all of these classes, whether it be, they typically took a final or a Regents, to ensure no harm. So basically, any student who does not qualify or does not submit an exemption waiver and takes a Regents exam, the higher of the two exams will be utilized for the student's final grade. So this includes all of our remote learners as well. So at the end of it, our final averages will be calculated as such. And I just want to make sure I'm saying this right. I'm saying this clearly, right? Is that in any class that we typically give a final or a Regents, now all of those classes will give a final. And then if they also are able to take a Regents and that child chooses to take the Regents, we will be offering them the highest of the two grades, so that there is a no-harm policy. At the end of it, the four-quarter averages, we have also typically, five percent used to go into our midterm, and ten percent would go into our, our final, making it fifteen percent, and now we're just doing the ten percent. So four-quarter averages will be twenty-two and a quarter, and a half for each quarter, plus the ten percent for the final exams or Regents scores. Okay? And again, we are still going to hold our traditional final testing window, because, again, we are offering finals in all of the areas that we typically do, whether it be Regents or just the final exam. Okay, so I went through that really quickly, and on a very quick timeline, I wanted to make sure I got through it. So are there any questions?
Yes, sir. How do students apply for the waiver?
Very good question. So we will be sending, I will be sending home from my office next, following our break, the letter explaining all of this to our families, and attached that will be the exemption for, for families, so that they can return it to us. We probably will have somewhat of a deadline to share it back with us so that we can be organized and prepared for the students, but of course, we know that there will still be families that might want to make that decision last minute, and of course, they can always send that to us as well.
And it would be one waiver per exam they're supposed to pay?
Correct, right.
Matthew?
Aaron, as far as the transcript is concerned, like, if they, they opt to, like, to the ELA, if they opt for the exemption, is one, is it, does a grade look better on it, the transcript or the exemption? You know what I'm saying? Like, if they, if it's more than eighty?
In terms of the Regents or the final?
The Regents. So I'm saying, like, for college purposes or whatever, does the exemption hurt, or, like, which one's better?
Well, I don't think you could say which one is better. I know that we have the option to put either exemption or the grade, no matter if the child fails or passes. So that's why they're saying it's more important, like, how does the family, how does the child want to represent that on their transcript? So if a child, you know, only does sixty-five, they may want to say exempt, and perhaps they want to instead have on their transcript the final, their final, which might have been an eighty, let's say, for example. But because all students are being given the opportunity to have exemption, I'm not quite sure that schools are going to be looking at one or the other, not a college, but I'm going to say that there is some, you know, difference in looking at it in terms of what might have been in the past.
Yeah, I'll just weigh in and say, if I get a score that's a little bit higher than I normally might get, that's going to reflect the rest of my transcript, I'd be anxious, I think, to get that number in there.
Right.
And vice versa, if I score lower, I would make sure that E is there because everyone's going to have that E there, it kind of makes me equal. But if it raises what looks like, you know, in terms of my transcript, what it looks like, I think I would, I would work to have that in. That'll be a family decision though.
So if a student feels like they're going to do well on it, you'd suggest they take it?
Well, I think there's no, there's, there's no risk in taking it because we as a district have the ability, let's say a child takes it, they fail it, we could still give them an exemption.
Or if they don't fail and they just don't do that well.
Right, it's fine, then, then we could still give an exemption. Right?
Yes.
Great.
Correct.
So for the, for the ones that they mandatorily do have to take the regions, they're going to have a final in that class as well as a regions?
Right, we want to make sure that we're giving our children multiple opportunities to get the highest score that they can.
And then they decide which one will go on to their transcript or no?
Yes, yes. And, and I think that that's, you know, a little bit different than what we've been used to. But our chairs, you know, we've been working hard and they certainly, they're looking at the finals that they would be administering. And aligning them to making sure that it was the curriculum that was taught explicitly and direct. We know that there's lots of kids who are going through different models of instruction right now. And so, you know, they're, they're doing the hard work of making sure that the assessments are tailored to that right now.
Because ninth grade, taking that earth science and that. And algebra, those are two of the hardest to take, especially when you're half in, half out. And then our ninth graders will be the last back, so that's another.
Yes, I can honestly say that in all my years of education, this is the first time that the state education department. Has been in alignment with the districts, is offering multiple opportunities for kids to make choices with their families in terms of what they're going to put on their transcript. I don't think we can ask for better than that in these climate, considering the federal government denied the waiver.
And one other question, the grades three, three through eight, each parent is still able to opt out of those tests?
Yes, that will be an additional letter that will go home from my office right after the vacation. This year, we're upgrading a little bit just to be a little bit more organized, there will be a Google form. And the parent can fill in right there if they prefer to take it or to not offer their child.
And they don't have to fill out the Google form, they could still write that same letter that they've always written.
It would be really helpful if they filled out the Google form.
It would be helpful, but not everybody.
It's a lot of tests.
Some people like me don't like Google Docs, sorry.
Okay, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Erin, the no harm policy, are we, we had, we're going to put that on our website for the community to see as to what, what the, you know, the boards agreeing or proving.
Yeah, absolutely.
They understand that the regions is not going to hurt them. The, most school districts doing this the same way. In other words, when I look at a no harm policy, I would think that regions exam as well as a final exam can be harmful to a kid. So if a kid scores poorly on a regions exam, but this also scores poorly at a final exam as a result of being remote or hybrid, isn't it sort of harm them in a way?
Well, you know, yes and no, right? Because at the end of the day, we can always put exempt on their transcript, we don't have to put the final exam or the regions.
So you can waive both of them?
You could waive both of them, yeah. I mean, the, the final exam is ours, right? I mean, that, that's the nice thing, we have autonomy in the transcript, we don't have autonomy in terms of the regions that we have sent up to the state, their permanent record. But that's not what goes to a college. So yeah, I mean, it's very plausible that you could fail both, so then it would just affect the final grade. We hope that doesn't happen. We've asked our, our staff and of course, they've been compassionately doing that all year. Is to just pay close attention to those students that are not doing well because maybe they were remote for a time or having challenges in, in hybrid. But yes, you're right, going back to your first question though. The presentation we have not released yet because of today, other than to our own staff and our chairs for additional feedback. It will go on our website, actually, Ms. Florio might have already presented it now that we're here tonight. And then again, a letter will go out from my office after the break and it will explain everything and including our, our no harm policy.
Do we have an official, no harm policy written that's, you know, a document that explains what it is and the function of it?
It is in the presentation, so if, if that's, if that's what you mean, that will be the language, the same language that will be in that letter for our parents.
Yeah, like an official board, you know, policy.
Like a board policy?
We don't have a board policy, no.
Is that what you're suggesting? I mean, this is a little different.
You're on the policy committee.
Something that we could, something that we could put up that some people understand that we're, we're taking the direction as that we're being pro student and not trying to hurt them. As a result of this year's structure, educational structure. And like I said, the 10% final exam with 10% regions, one of them is going to count as a grade, so it's going to be 22.5% plus 10%.
Right, so the, the most a child. Can't waive both of them, but, but the child could get up to a 90, right, 90% in that, in that particular class. So we made it so that the percentage wasn't so egregious. But yet it wasn't so low that there was no accountability for our students. We know what happened last year, it was, it's hard, it was a long year, kids felt like, well, why am I even doing this? So we, our chairs, everyone felt like that was, you know, comfortable, but if you're asking for an official policy. But otherwise, I think.
We could write something up, you know, for the shift that we put on, on our website so the community could see. They look, we are taking a proactive approach.
And this is the policy from here on out, so it's not just a one year thing.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you, you would like to make this and state this always, okay.
I don't know that we'd be permitted to give exemptions, for example, from here on out. I, I, I don't think that we would be able to once we're back in a normal school. We could create a policy, we'd have to be thoughtful about that.
There's many school districts out there that I know of.
Well, I mean, you know, I think, I think everybody, or if you don't know, the, the state does not suggest that you use the regions within your final grade calculations typically. And of course, that's up to each school district. In terms of how much percentage or not, we, we certainly have control over that.
But we count our regions towards our final exam grade.
Yeah, and most school districts do, I don't want to suggest that they don't.
There, there are a handful out there that don't.
There absolutely is, there absolutely is, I came from one.
Yeah, so the thing is, maybe we want to move towards that, where we're saying, hey, you know what, we're not going to count the regions that's going to harm the kids' grade. But you know, we're going to calculate the grade, you know, either that lower percentage or no percentage for the regions.
I certainly think it's an interesting conversation, yeah, absolutely.
It's something we can have, ask our, our policy committee to, to take a look at.
And I would say let our, our chairs, our principals, everybody weigh in there.
Let people weigh in, yep.
Is there any room for changing that 10%? Because while I appreciate what you say, they have the ability to get a 90, that would mean that every quarter, being hybrid. Well, for at least three quarters they were hybrid, that they would have to have achieved 100 in that class. And then if they bombed the final and they bombed the regions, then they get a 90 for the, you know, for the course. So that's kind of unrealistic, especially in a hybrid world. Is there a little bit of room for that 10%? Because I feel like that 10% is going to hurt a lot of children. Because especially ninth and 10th grade who aren't even going back until after the break. I just feel like that that is still very harmful, like 10%. I, I appreciate you guys coming down from the 15 it used to be, but I feel like in today's world, that is going to harm. And these are kids' grades for the, you know, for their transcripts. It's not like we're saying, ah, if you don't pass this class, it's okay, you can take, no, it's, this is their grade and. You know, it's, it's our responsibility because especially since the fact that we didn't have the live streaming that we have now for most of their school year. Many of these children were teaching themselves and that is just not fair to assess them at the end of the year on all of this and let it all count that way.
So I'll, I'll just jump in and say that 10% is a lower number that we've had. We did go back and speak with department chairs who are our teachers and work with our teachers and our administrators. And all felt comfortable with this so that it would not hurt a great majority of, you know, you use the term most, it would not hurt most of our students. We would not want to create something that would hurt most of our students, it would not offer it up in, in this way.
Yeah, and I have to agree, our chairs, our teachers are our biggest advocate for our students. Any areas that there was some concern, we had conversation, we've been having conversation. And again, that compassion around, this is the last quarter, if anyone's having any issues, please, you know, let's address that. But I think if there was thought that students would not be able to pass and pass well, we would have heard that. So we did feel like it was fair based on the conversation all around.
Is there any ability for them to, especially the ninth graders who are going to take those, those two very difficult regences? I can't imagine that their final exam isn't going to be difficult, our science and algebra. Is there any room that if they bomb both of those, that they could maybe retake a final or something? I mean, is there a retake day that we could kind of make up something because?
Well, we certainly have a little wiggle room in our final exam schedule, but we can go back and, you know, talk to our, our teachers about that.
I'm thinking ninth grade especially, since they're not coming back right away, they're, you know, algebra and earth science are very difficult regions to take. They're very difficult classes to pass and in a normal year. And now, you know, we may end up really with a bunch of kids. I mean, I know, I know personally, I have a ninth grader who is a very good student and he's struggling in both of those classes. And he's got two phenomenal teachers for each one of those classes, so it's not that.
Yeah, and to piggyback on what Meredith's saying, you know, part of the problem is, is, you know, kids that are getting used to getting 95, 96, okay, are harder. So if you talk about ninth graders, there's eighth graders, honest kids that are taking the same exams. You know, so you're dropping it back even more. And to be honest with you, you know, I can only say, our teachers are doing the very best they can. I mean, they are, this has been a year like we have never seen, this is my 29th year of teaching. You know, my own child has had teachers who have been out sick of COVID and have had multiple subs in the last three weeks. And they, they don't feel like they're, you know.
Prepared.
They're prepared. And he's a kid that normally a 95, 96 student, so. I mean, I would agree, I mean, I would, you know, let's not make the decision tonight, but let's look at that and say, maybe we should go 5%. You know, because even 10% can be harmful to a child.
Well, I think we also have to remember too, that we have our regions review classes that are going to be starting. Our teachers are also expected and do offer extra help. You know, so I would say, give us some time to go back and talk with the chairs and, and see if they see it as a concern. We can certainly share with you, you know, data around any students that are still looking like they're not doing well. And then maybe that's a, a different conversation, but I do think we have to respect that the teachers at this point are feeling.
Yeah, yeah, right. Maybe we look at that, that model.
Absolutely, I'll bring, we'll bring it back, yes, sir.
I don't understand why we can't do the 10% that would help a student's final average and not use the 10% at all if it would hurt a student's final average.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So if a 10% would help the student's average, but the 10%, like if they do horrible, wouldn't help them? Why couldn't we just not use it for the students that it would harm? That's a real do no harm policy, not using that, that percentage.
Right, so, so in other words, it just not count at all, whereas we were trying to give more of the no harm.
Use it, if it would hurt them, don't use it.
I've heard of policies such as that, let's go back Erin and have that conversation.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Mrs. Heinz, I just want to thank you for putting it together, talking to everybody.
No problem, thank you.
I know that we were all over, but I also agree with whatever everybody is saying. Just one word that Dr. Palteri said that it wouldn't hurt most students, we want to get it to a point where it's not going to hurt any students.
Any students, absolutely, agreed.
If we can come back and all agree on something or get on the same page.
We'll go back and have conversation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
We're going to move on now to, Mrs. Heinz, thank you very much and yes, for putting our whole team together to have that. Presentation put together and all the work that we're into it, thank you. We're going to move now to Mr. O'Keefe and our fourth, is that correct, sir, our fourth budget presentation?
Yep, this is our fourth.
Thank you.
All right, tonight, it's just an overview, a lot of the information we've already spoken about in the three prior presentations. This just summarizes it, draws it together for you to show you where we stand today. In our last board meeting, you might recall that the, the retirement date for teachers was pushed back. Normally, they need to submit their paperwork by March 1st, that has now been pushed to the beginning of April. So I don't necessarily have any numbers to share with you yet regarding any savings to the budget based on retirement. So we're just going to go with the numbers that we have spoken about. This is the remaining timeline, tonight is the fourth meeting, our next presentation on the 7th, when we return from recess is the final meeting. We come back on April 20th to adopt a budget, so by then we need to balance out our expenditures versus our revenues. Then we have our public hearing on May 5th and the actual vote on the 18th. So just a quick review, again, these are things that we've spoken about before. The tax levy, this is the portion paid by the taxpayers of the district, this has changed slightly since our first presentation. It's actually gone down by about $30,000. We were notified by the town of Islip that they had negotiated a pilot on a property in the town of Islip. Which will provide us $30,000 in pilot revenue for next year. So by law, we must reduce our levy by that pilot amount. So the new levy. Is $199,508,000. That's a 1.97% budget levy to levy increase. You might recall the original one was a 199, so it's just a subtle change. Now, this can still change in the coming days. The, the top two numbers, the tax base growth factor and the allowable levy growth factor, those numbers are locked in. So that, that 860,000 and the 2.29 million. Those numbers are, are decided upon already via the state for the calculation. The pilots, I don't expect any change between now and the next time we meet. The part that can change is the last part, the capital tax levy. And again, I know unfortunately, I'm sorry that people at home can't really see this, but this will be up on the, the website tomorrow. Right now, that change in that portion of the calculation is about $800,000. If on April 1st, when the budget is finalized by the state, if there's a substantial or material change in our building aid. Because they are still tweaking different formulas, that could change that one last number. I wouldn't expect a major change, but I could come back to you at the next meeting with yet another revision, so I'll keep you posted on that. And again, I know this is hard to see even for the people here in the audience, Newsday released a similar article the other day. I just bring together for you a group of neighboring districts, what we consider the larger districts, districts with more than 5,000 or 6,000. Student enrollees, just to take a look at, you know, what is their levy increase and what does their levy look like when you compare it against CHM? So, you know, who are we talking about? We're talking about the Brentwoods of the world, Half Hollow Hills and Hot Fog and Longwood and Middle Country, Smithtown, Three Village, William Floyd, et cetera. So when we look at that large group, the, the average is a little over 2%, it's 2.03%. If I were to expand this table for you and show you all of Suffolk County, it's actually 2.00%. And if we look at every district on Long Island, the current average is 1.87%. So you know, we're right there, again, people have the misconception that it's a 2% tax cap. The levy increase, that percentage is actually unique for every district. And it depends on things like building aid and capital projects and the tax base growth factor. You know, the only thing that we share that all districts have together is the allowable levy growth factor. We all get that 1.23% in our calculation. But the tax base growth factor is unique for every district. Pilots are unique for every district and the change in the capital tax levy is unique for every district. So that's why every district's percentage number is slightly different than the other. I mean, you'll remember four or five years ago, we had a large loss in building aid. It resulted in an increase in the tax levy, we had a 5.73% levy increase, it was driven by that. So I'll keep you posted there, just sharing again, we looked at this before, this is the governor's state aid proposal. So no new changes, I would anticipate that the budget will hopefully come in on time, hopefully we'll see it on April 1st or April 2nd. And we know the governor is a little peacretified right now with a couple of other challenges. So hopefully, he's not battling the legislators and maybe we come out a little ahead on this, this year. But the concerning part is, you know, for the, I think the third or fourth year in a row. He's looking to change the categories of aid that we receive, so that's why you see three columns here. The first column that you see here, sort of in the middle of the screen, is the state aid that we were told April 1st last year. So that's what we adopted our budget based on, that $128 million, that's what we thought the numbers were going to be. Now, when we adopted our budget, we modified that slightly because we were also told that we were going to receive nearly a $4 million cut in our transportation aid. But state aid is still all up in the air, so I can't tell you with any certainty where we stand with that, I hope to have more information the next time we meet. But the part that concerns me is, you know, in the middle column, all of a sudden you start to see areas where there's no numbers. So what the governor has done, and he's proposed this three times before, is he's eliminating a bunch of aid categories. Like BOCs aid, hardware aid, technology aid, software aid, textbook aid, transportation aid, high tax aid. He's eliminating all of those in his budget. And he's proposing a new category that you see up top here called services aid. And you see the number there and the new column is 21.7 million. But when you look down to the bottom, you'd almost think, well, he's, you know, just moving the monies around in different categories. You see the aid for this year is actually lower than what our adopted budget is, which isn't necessarily uncommon. But the part that concerns me is when you add up the various categories that are eliminated, the total is 700,000. the total is seven hundred thousand more than the number you're seeing in the middle column. So already, he's tinkering um, with what that number could be. We do have strong support to, again, have this not go through. So I'm hoping that we maintain our various aid categories because those are based on actual expenditures. Whereas if he lumps it into one category, it's just an arbitrary number that will increase or decrease based on the budget adopted by the state. So in the executive budget, moving to the current year as proposed right now is a hundred and twenty-eight million. So for all intensive purposes, it's basically flat compared to what we adopted last year. So hopefully, I'll have some better news for everyone on the seventh.
Question.
Sure.
On that chart, it says local district funding adjustment, negative eleven point, eleven point six million dollars.
Yeah, that's another scary part.
And it says COVID nineteen supplemental stimulus. Now, we know stimulus usually is a one-time.
Yep.
It's eleven million, eleven, you know, eleven million, six hundred and fifty thousand.
It has a bad smell of gap elimination adjustment.
Yeah.
That that is concerning. Now, in recent days, the governor and even the Controller's Office have released information stating that they have found money, that these cuts are not going to be necessary. So I'm hoping to see those end in next year's proposed. You know, this year, they kept telling everyone, you know, districts are getting this CARES funding. All the CARES funding was is they just basically took away state aid and supplemented it with federal aid. So there was no new money. We didn't get an additional million dollars. We got the same million dollars. They just put a different name on it. So he's proposing doing the same thing next year by deducting eleven point six million dollars from our state aid, basically from our foundation aid, and supplementing it with stimulus money. Now, that's scary because if next year, the state's in the same fiscal crisis and the feds aren't prepared to provide a stimulus, you know, there's an eleven million dollar shortfall. So I'm I'm hoping, I don't want to dwell too much on the what-ifs. I hope that on April first, we come back with some better news there. And this one, I know, is is very tough to see. So I mean, please, you'll take a look at it when you can from home, um, when I have it up on the website. And I apologize because some of the columns, when I run different reports, the numbers come out in different orders. But just to show you what you have here, this is the projected revenue for next school year. So the first three columns are the actual revenue the district received, not what we budgeted for, the revenue we received in the various categories. So just starting up top, you have, you know, our property tax levy, then you have our pilots, then you have student fees. So that's things like EP exam and driver's ed, stuff like that. Then you have charges for field trips. That's that small amount of money you hear seeing this fourth column. That's actually monies that children pay to go on field trips using buses and things like that. Tuition um, from other districts. So some districts do send children here to Sagem for their education. It's usually a special education scenario. Interest and earnings, obviously, for quite some time, we were doing wonderful with interest. But interest has plummeted, as you probably have seen in your own bank accounts. Then we have rent of real property, individual. Those are the monies we receive um, for use of facilities uh, across our district. The next one is rent of real property of governments, and you've seen that that's grown significantly over the last few years. That one point five plus million dollars, that's the monies we received from Eastern Suffolk BOSI's for their rent of our various properties. Then we have a bunch of miscellaneous revenue sources. It's could be donations, BOSI's refunds from prior years, insurance recoveries, workers' comp recoveries, et cetera. We budget about the same each year, somewhere around two point seven, two point eight million. Then you have state aid, all categories. Again, hard to see, but that's a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars you see over on the far right there. But the the thing I'd want to point out is if you look historically over the last five years, state aid has actually gone down and been flat. You know, if you go back to seventeen eighteen, we got over a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars in state aid. You know, and it dropped to a hundred and twenty-six, a hundred and twenty-six, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-eight. You know, the trends for state aid have not been strong, which has really restricted our budget. Medicaid assistance, we get a nominal amount of money each year. I budget about a quarter of a million dollars for Medicaid building. And the last category is appropriation of fund balance. So for those three years, seventeen, eighteen through nineteen, twenty, uh, our budget was balanced without the need for appropriating fund balance. Last year, when we were building the budget, that's when we learned that there's a good possibility we weren't going to be receiving aid on transportation. The costs that we incurred from March to June, um, there was, again, very small changes in state aid. So the board adopted a budget by appropriating three point nine million dollars of appropriated fund balance to fill that state aid shortfall. And we also appropriated nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from our TRS reserve to cover the increases in the employer contributions to our retirement system. Um, and that balanced our budget. So all year long, we've been living under the threat of the twenty percent cuts. In the last few weeks, somehow, they say that those are not going to come to fruition. Again, I don't know for certain until we actually receive our March thirty-first payment, because that's actually the first sizable state aid payment we'll get. We have gotten some smaller payments come into us that were full. So if at the end of March, we get our full payment, I can anticipate that we're going to receive all the monies um, that the government, you know, the state is now saying we're going to receive. So that the thing to find here is this revenue budget only supports a budget-to-budget increase of about one point seven million dollars, which is only a half a percent. You know, we know our budgets for the last few years have been one and a half to two percent a year. So this is a much smaller budget-to-budget increase. I would anticipate we're going to see a change on April first. And certainly, at this time, I'm not going to recommend any appropriation of fund balance till we see our final expenditure picture and revenue picture. Any questions here? So this one just sums up the three prior presentations. You know, we broke the expenditure budget down into the various functional categories. And we spent time in each budget presentation going through all of them. This one small slide just sort of sums up all those things that we've spoken about over the last three meetings. So it just breaks the categories down into the functional ranges that you see up there. You know, the non-instructional general support category, instructional, which is general education and special education, our transportation costs, our employee benefits, our debt service payments, uh, basically the interest and principal on our outstanding bonds, and our inter-fund transfers. So those are monies to uh, pay for capital projects, or monies we earmark to support our summer special education program. So year-to-year change, like we said in the last meeting, is a current increase of three point zero eight percent. We do know that this number will change. Again, like I said at the start of the presentation, it does not reflect any potential retirements because right now, I I don't have firm numbers on that yet. I anticipate having those by about the sixth of April. So at that time, I can rework the presentation and give you an update. Not only will I have to calculate, obviously, the salary piece, but I'll have to calculate the benefit piece and any other changes that my office and Mr. Sax's office receives between now and then. Also, obviously, if we receive the state aid that um, we potentially could receive at the end of this month, that may pay, you know, change our spending strategy. There might be things now that we've hauled off on buying this year. We begin buying them this year. We cut those purchase orders. We incur those debt, those expenditures in this year. And then we restructure in the coming weeks what we project to buy in equipment and things like that in next year. So there might be some juggling in the last few weeks as we get towards the final budget. But right now, as it stands, and you know, I don't want you to be concerned about this, there is an eight and a half million dollar gap between the expenditure budget and the revenue budget, which is about two and a half percent. So I mean, it's a very large number. But percentage-wise, it is manageable. I mean, normally, at this time in the budget process, we're about two percent off, somewhere around six million, a little over six million. So this is a little bit larger than normal, but usually by now, I also know what my teacher retirements are. Uh, I don't know that number specifically yet. I'll know it, you know, the next time we meet. Any questions on this slide? So the last piece here is again just showing the um, capital reserve utilization that the administration is recommending. We know how beneficial the capital reserve has been to us. We proposed to our voters last year, use of the reserve, we used about five point nine nine million dollars. Some of the fruits of that are the new turf fields that we see at High School East and High School North. There's still a lot more work that's going to be done over the summer. Unfortunately, a lot of the work can't be done during the school year. So High School East is going to be getting a new track this summer. We're doing roofing projects throughout the district. There'll be a retaining wall at High School East. The uh, walkway to the visitor uh, bleachers will be restored because that washed away long ago. So there is actually no way to get to the visitor bleachers right now. So there's quite a number of projects that we'll be completing. This just carries on that. So obviously, we we went to the voters two years ago and we asked them if we had surplus in a given year. Could we put money in this reserve that could only be used for capital projects? Uh, and they overwhelmingly approved that. Last year, we went to the voters because, again, they have to approve us establishing this reserve. They also have to approve us spending from this reserve. So we went to the voters with that seven million dollar proposition, a six million dollar proposition last year, and they overwhelmingly approved it, and we're moving well nicely on those projects. For next year, um, we don't have, the the reserve has about three point three million dollars in it. So what I'd like to do in addition to the other eight million dollars of the capital work that we have proposed in the budget is spending three million dollars from the reserve to start fast-tracking some of these sorely needed bathroom renovations uh, at Seneca, Sammaset, and North. Those buildings are in dire need of bathroom renovations. Most of them are completely original. Uh, we had done some bathroom renovations and revamps back in the bond of, you know, oh, four to oh, six on elementary buildings, refreshed a lot of those. These buildings, the bathrooms have not been touched. Some of them in North are actually in the condition where we don't even use them. So I I think that instead of waiting to a a future year where we could put them into the budget, you know, we'll use the budgetary monies to finish off our major roofing projects. So we'll be done with those. And we could use our reserves monies, if the voters approve it, to take care of these major bathroom projects. And I think it puts the district in a nice place, moving into the following year to really start doing some more additional improvements in our buildings. Did the board have any questions on this slide?
Rob and then Meredith. John, the um, the the three point four six million dollars, is that money already encumbered in that capital projects fund? Is it already there?
The three million forty-six thousand?
Yes.
It's not that it's encumbered. It it, the three point two seven six million is in a reserve specifically for capital projects. Yes.
You said budgetary monies that we use, that we're going to use for roofing. Is that money that was budgeted for this year for roofs?
Yeah. Yeah, there's about eight million dollars worth of other capital work in addition to this reserve work, just like we did this year.
So we held off on that because of the the threat of a of a cut?
No, no, capital work continues because capital is is part of the tax levy calculation. So those monies are earmarked. If you don't do those work, you can't levy those monies.
The um, the fact that we're doing these capital projects next year, will that, you know, those exemptions raise what we can get in tax levy money?
This would have no impact on the tax levy.
It would have no.
This this has no impact at all on the tax levy. Yeah, the the projects that we budget within the scope of the budget, that's part of that capital tax levy piece, that last part of the the calculation for the tax levy. So an increase or a decrease in the number of projects will fluctuate that number. That's why other districts.
That's why.
Numbers jump all around from zero to four, et cetera.
Now, is that three million dollars that we're using, uh, adable in it?
That is all adable work, correct. So we get seventy-six percent. So even though we're taking this money from our savings account and we're spending the money, the district will receive in building aid seventy-six cents on every dollar that we spend for these projects.
Now, the the projects that we did this year, the turf fields, the retaining wall, tracks, did we tie that into building aid?
That's all adable. Yeah.
Seventy-six percent back.
Yeah, I mean, at High School East, it's difficult to get aid because the building is still considered a new building and we're still receiving aid on the building. So the way at East, we were able to get aid on the track and the turf and the wall is the fact that we coupled it to an upgrade in the fire alarm system within the building. So the fire alarm system in East um, was built at a time where I guess there was X number of smokeheads for for square feet. There's been a change in the code. We're going to upgrade it to that new code. So by doing an interior project and tying the outside projects to it, it makes the whole project adable. You know, it's like even at, you know, so at um, Tippawa, we had done some parking lot work um, over the summer last year. If all we did was the parking lot work, that would not have been an adable because it's outside site work. But inside, we did some asbestos floor abatements in various classrooms. So by coupling the outside work to the inside work, it makes the whole project adable. Does it make common sense? Not necessarily, but that's how the state aid system works.
And you had mentioned that um, that we held back some monies this year on purchases because we weren't certain about the the ten percent cut, the twenty-six.
Yeah, those are on equipment, like new trucks for facilities.
Technology?
Some technology. There's about nine hundred thousand dollars still earmarked for technology purchases.
So if we had to use that money to buy Chromebooks or.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
We have the ability to do that.
Yep. We actually spoke at our cabinet meeting that we're going to start, as soon as I know for certain that that's there, we're going to, not only do we need to change our thoughts about next year's budget, the one that we just looked at, because a lot of what's in next year's budget were the things that, or in this year's budget, we didn't spend. You know, we didn't want to stop that progress. So we have to change what those items are, and we could start purchasing here. I I think you could see some dramatic purchases in the month of April and May, uh, if we see those monies that are available to us.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Meredith.
So the capital reserve fund, just to refresh everybody, the capital reserve fund, we all voted on because we put money in there and then it can only be used to capital reserves. The board can't decide to use it towards something else. It's only for um, capital improvements.
Yeah, it's sort of like even when you set up a retirement, like an IRA uh, your own, you can put your money in there, but you can only take it out for that one reason.
Right. So even if we had a budget shortfall, these projects would still take place because
Correct.
they're already protected by that smarter way to invest, which was the capital reserve.
Yeah, well, it just gives you more flexibility that when when there are years where you have surplus, you know, because now we're looking at years if if we realize these eleven million dollar cuts and the federal government doesn't come back in and, you know, backfill the money in out years, those are the years where you then just need to start looking at at your reserves and determining whether or not you're going to utilize your reserves, which is why you want to have a strong reserve position.
Right. And it also doesn't put us in any excessive debt, like when we take out bonds and then we pay like.
Yeah, because you.
We pay fifteen million dollars.
Payers have already either paid this money themselves, or this is surplus state aid, whatever the case was, these monies belong to the taxpayer.
Because like at this moment, when we need all these improvements done to East, we're still paying fifteen million dollars a year in interest on.
Interest and principal. Yeah, we still have um, quite a number of years, thirteen or so, I think, um, left on our bond debt. But, you know, each year, you, if you remember my presentations from three or four years ago, that number was almost twenty-one million. So the debt is falling off. We have a period of about six or seven years where the debt stays flat, and then there'll actually be another seven million dollar drop, and it'll stay pretty steady to the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
Just a simple question, John. Where it says Seneca A Wing Bathroom and then the two and the B Wing Bathroom four, are those two separate bathrooms? Is that?
Yeah, there was a little confusion when I showed the slide last time, you know, why um, like the Seneca A Wing was one price, where the B Wing was another price. There's probably a number of bathrooms in that particular wing. So just so people understood, the A Wing has two bathrooms that are going to be done. The B Wing has four, C Wing has two. You know, so the prices vary, obviously, based on the square footage, the size of the bathroom. Obviously, buildings that are fifty, sixty years old, um, there is extensive abatements involved in that work because the building, the room does need to be stripped down uh, to bare construction. So you are abating the tiles, you are abating any lead uh, in the piping of the fixtures. There could be asbestos in the walls. All of those things that were commonplace fifty years ago. Anything else? So that that particular proposition, just for the the people here in the audience at home, is an item for the board's consideration this evening. So our additional discussions will be, again, right after the recess. So hopefully, we'll come back with some closer numbers. But I do think that, you know, it will be a busy budget cycle all the way to the twentieth. That will be fine-tuning the budget all the way to the end. So I'll keep everyone posted, and we'll take it from there. Yes.
John, I hate to bother you with it, but you lost me back on slide three. Is there a possibility to go back there and just talk about pilots and what happened to the particular pilot that you referenced? I missed something there.
Yeah, um, Mr. Sax, do you recall, what what did we receive? About a million dollars a year in pilots? Yes. I mean, in rough numbers, with all the pilots, because we get pilots from the town of Islip, town of Brookhaven, and from Suffolk County, uh, we receive about a million dollars a year. A few weeks ago, I received a pilot notice from the town of Islip, alerting me, I think it was a new ten-year pilot that's about thirty thousand dollars a year. alerting me, I think it was a new 10-year pilot that's about $30,000 a year. So the pilots were changing already by about $60,000. The amount is going down. So when the pilots go down, it's a, um, sorry, go up. It's a subtraction into the tax cap load because if, if they're giving us new pilot monies, I can't tax the taxpayer for it. See, you're receiving extra monies.
So it's a reduction to the formula?
A reduction to the formula.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. So.
I missed something.
An, yeah, an increase in the amount of money we receive from an IDA is a decrease in what the taxpayer pays. We're all good? All right.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Mr. O'Keefe, thank you. Mr. Sax, thank you for that team putting that together. I'm going to jump in with one more item here. Mr. Pecrell, if you don't mind, and that is just student return. We returned our sixth graders. We returned our 12th graders. We've returned our 11th graders and we've returned our eighth graders. Uh, that has gone really well in terms of our students and their being in school and seeing their friends. Unfortunately, with these returns and what's happened in terms of Suffolk County and increases in numbers of COVID cases throughout the county, those cases have made their way into our schools. So when we started two weeks ago with 50 quarantines a week, last week we were over 200 students being quarantined. And, uh, today alone, we are close to almost 100 students being quarantined with numbers of kids being, uh, pulled from, from classes, sent home or told to stay home due to the number of cases. Again, not spread in our buildings, but us, the county numbers going up. So more staff, more teachers and more students being quarantined. My fear is we're going to have at least 300 kids quarantined this week. And as a result, I, we knew this might come. We talked about this. But as a result of the, we had talked about bringing back our seventh, ninth and 10th graders on April 7th. And I'd like to propose and, and, and have a discussion around if you, if you'd allow me to, uh, around moving that date from April 7th to, uh, that following. So it's not seventh, the 7th Wednesday, but rather that next Monday. Uh, we had talked about this originally. Mr. Skyler had mentioned something last time about moving it to April 12th. And I, I think that we might want to consider, strongly consider having that last group come in on April 12th instead of April 7th. It'll buy us a little more time. Right now the state is still requiring six foot and under be quarantined. And that is just onerous to our schools, our students, our staff. And so that's why I would make that recommendation now that we, we move it to, from the 7th to the 12th. So hybrid students would miss maybe perhaps one day, at most two days of in-person. They would still live stream and then they'd all be back on the 12th instead of the 7th.
Mr. McRisa?
Chris, you had, um, given us some really good news about two weeks ago with the six foot, three foot um, guidance. The CDC had, I don't want to say changed, but they made the recommendation to go three feet. Are we still waiting for the Suffolk County Department of Health to give us the green light to use that? Because wouldn't that dramatically change the amount of kids that are out? You know, based on the, the distance alone, I would think you'd cut it in half and, and would that, that could happen any day?
So New York State has not adopted it yet? And that's, that's the holdup right now. They say there, I just read again today that expeditiously they're working on this, that they're looking at CDC's recommendation, but this New York State has not adopted it and therefore Suffolk County has not yet. I, I'm hopeful that if you read that CDC recommendation closely, they do talk a lot about elementary schools. That's where we would not get a lot of relief because our kids are in for the most part already. The kids, all the kids that want to be, certainly. Uh, so I'm concerned somewhat that they might say, well, only at elementaries could be three feet. That they might say secondary needs to stay at six. Or they'll say, all right, we could bring everyone back in at three feet, but we're still going to quarantine kids that are six, within six feet. I, I don't know what they're, they're going to say. The state has not moved on it yet. They, they've historically over this past year, anytime CDC has made a recommendation, New York State seems to move a week or two later. The, the real recommendation came out officially last Friday, so this Friday would be a week. I'm hoping that we hear something during the break. I'm hoping that it's going to go down to three feet and I'm hoping they're not going to quarantine anyone unless they're closer than three feet. That would change our lives dramatically for our students and our staff.
Sarah and then Meredith, please.
The CDC guidance just changed the footage, but not the quarantine footage.
That, that's correct. That it would still be up to the county, uh, still be up to the state. I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that if they say you can be within three feet, that why would we quarantine anyone that's at four feet or five feet or six feet? But, uh, that hasn't happened yet.
So, um, I, I don't love the idea of pushing it back because I just feel like our children just keep getting the short end, basically. What if we're, what if we as a board come together and, and speak up to the Department of Health? The reason why the numbers are going up of positive cases is because we're testing a bunch of healthy asymptomatic athletes for no reason. So if we speak up and we say we don't want to keep this testing going, the numbers will start to go down, the quarantining will start to go down. It, it's just, at this point, it's ridiculous. I mean, I don't mean to be insensitive, but we have people flooding through our borders without being tested, without having anything and being put right into our communities with no problem. Nobody sees an issue there. But if our kids are five and a half feet apart, now they got to stay home for 10 days. It doesn't make any sense to me. I don't like when we, when we keep conforming our children and we keep allowing our children to be used in this manner for other purposes. I, I understand that the guidelines are the guidelines, but when you start to speak up against the guidelines is when you'll start to see them loosen up a little bit. It's, I just, I don't see the science behind it. So I can't personally say, say, yes, I would, I'd be okay with them coming back on the 12th. Because what if the 12th turns into the 14th? And what if that turns into the 16th? We saw that happen last year. We kept saying it's our children. Maybe they can come back by choice. Maybe whoever wants to come back in ninth, 10th and 7th grade on, uh, Wednesday, the 7th can come back. If other children feel like until the 12th, they'd be more comfortable being home, let that be them and their family's choice. But I just feel like we just keep, our, our focus should be more stop the testing. We should be coming together as a board, writing letters on that behalf, speaking to the Department of Health on that behalf, speaking to Mr. Malone, who's made this rule on that behalf. And, and if we stop this testing of these athletes who don't have symptoms and are not running around, then we will actually stop most of the quarantines. They're mostly coming from, we get a positive case, now the whole volleyball team's home. So now you get 15 kids home because one person who has no symptoms got, had to have a mandatory test by the, by the Suffolk County rules. That's where our, our focus needs to be as a board.
I think Sarah, I guess first. Chris, I, I noticed that, you know, and, and maybe this is an off-topic, uh, you know, comment, but some, some, um, districts quarantine differently than we do. So for example, there might be a volleyball team in a little school where the student comes down with COVID and just that student gets quarantined and, and the volleyball team continues to happen. And then there's some school districts that, you know, very, very cautious, say, you know, the whole volleyball team's out. Is there any reason why, why there's that disparity between one district and another?
Sure. And it's not even districts, it's teams. We, we've had instances where we've put out whole teams. We've had instances where we've put out only one or two students. And that's happened of late as well. And we turn to a coach and say, how are you cohorting your team? How are you separating your team? How are you making sure that you're keeping kids apart? Uh, many teams do it. I, I was at the football game. The coach was pretty vehement in making sure the kids were spread out so there wouldn't be any issues if in fact there was a positive case at one point. But we've had instances with several of our unfortunate volleyball teams where that, that hasn't happened. And so the coaches have told us, oh no, I, I kept the kids together. They've been together and therefore they all have been within six feet. But we've had instances, I think Patty of late, where a team said, I had only one kid or two kids. And the coaches went back, looked at it and we only put out those one or two kids. I, I'm going to stop saying we. We're told who, we, we're not, believe me, I'm not running around. Nobody here wants to do this, put kids out. Uh, we want them to be safe, obviously, and, and we're cautious in that regard for our students and our staff. But uh, Patty, we, we just had an instance, right, where we put out one or two kids instead of an entire team? And I know we are trying to do that. I know Mr. Butell and Mrs. McIntee and you. I've seen you on Zooms and heard you talking to the coaches, imploring them to keep kids separated, figure out a way to cohort kids so they're not putting out entire teams.
Yes. Recently we put out just a couple of kids. Uh, we definitely lean on the coaches anytime we get a positive result. Um, unfortunately lately, we've had our kids test negatives. So the coaches feel comfortable doing more together as a team. And then a child becomes symptomatic, goes, gets tested and then they come back testing positive. And at that point, we have the coaches going back to, uh, game tapes to see who we can eliminate, um, from being quarantined. Um, but the last two days, unfortunately, the coaches did not feel comfortable saying that they weren't in contact with the positive case.
Look, I, I know that I brought it up last time and, and, uh, you know, I'm grateful for my kids to be back, but even if my kids were returning on, um, you know, April 7th, I'd still feel more comfortable with the 12th one because you get that spike, okay, after these, these breaks and people going away and, and whatnot. Um, as it eased some of the restrictions, sometimes we see even a larger jump. So, you know, look, we, we pay you to make the recommendations and if that's your recommendation, um, I certainly support it. So.
Sarah?
I don't know if more people want to weigh in on it as well.
I also think that you should be making these decisions because you're not going to ask us when we should close for snow days. I think this has to be often your decision to make. It's day-to-day operations and we really don't oversee that.
I certainly appreciate you asking. I mean, you know, we, we, we have taken recommendations before and not, and not gone with them and, and changed our minds. So I think it's at least prudent to ask us before he makes a decision and then two days later, somebody sends an email and then it's a discussion.
Yes, certainly we should.
I'm fine with the discussion. I'm fine with the 12th. I'm also fine with what Meredith said, that maybe on April 5th or 6th, that there was a spike. Usually it's that first day back that we get everybody's answer on what happened over the break. Is that, is that?
Uh, usually that's when they could pile up during the break and, and, and we see that number. I'm going to just, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Ms. Hines, who is not going to expect this, but I, I thank you, Mrs. Hines. Because she is the one that ends up dealing with all the returns and those dates and the surveys. So the concern I think is if we wait too long, then that backs up. We don't know who's coming. We don't know who to be prepared for. And so that's why I would prefer tonight to say.
If everybody wouldn't mind, if we can.
The 7th or the 12th. But let me, I, Mrs. Volpe's idea of, let's say we tell everybody, come back on the 7th. We're expecting on the 7th. But those of you who want to wait till the 12th, uh, come back on the 12th.
Could have a longer window.
But we have to, like, that's it. Like, then we're done. But those that want to come in on the 7th and feel more comfortable, I know there are others, there are some that feel more comfortable.
We can absolutely update the survey if that's what, you know, we all agree upon. Uh, I think that would be a fair, you know, compromise in terms of anybody who feels comfortable coming back, anybody that wants to stay out. Just it, it is, it is very helpful for the principals and the district to just make sure that we have everybody scheduled appropriately.
Chris, wouldn't that be distracting for the president, you know, to have some kids coming in? Have a large group coming in a couple of days later?
It's, it is, it is a couple of days later. Yes. I mean, the 7th again is a Wednesday. So 7th, 8th, 9th, and then we're off Saturday, Sunday, and then we're back on Monday. So it's, it's certainly not ideal. Uh, we would ask that people make a decision and, and stick with it. So we, we can do the 7th, we can do the 12th, we can ask people to come back in on the 7th, we expect the 7th. I, I don't know what percent we'd have that would want to stay out till the 12th. It does buy us a few more days. And again, I'm concerned about just quarantines and that first week worried about the spike that comes with each break.
I just think we need to put the safety and welfare first. And, and, and look, we say the 12th, but if all of a sudden New York State adopts a three-foot social distancing, now we're back to the 7th. No?
Yeah. Uh, we, we, I'm hoping we do get that information, uh, sooner rather than later. And again, but we'll also need though, as, as Ms. Water was said, was the information around what is going to be the quarantine? Are they going to drop it to three? If it's going to stay at six, that doesn't really help us. No, they, they didn't. But again, New York State does not have to. Uh, but obviously they don't have to bother what CDC is doing. They, they, they do their own, their own piece. Laura?
Um, so I'm fine with moving it to, uh, the 12th, I think, the three days, especially coming back after a break where people are out. Um, and speaking personally from me, I got COVID, you know, during Thanksgiving. Not that I went anywhere or did anything. I was very cautious. And my husband was in food stores and out and doing a lot of things and my entire family got it then. And I think we saw the spike here too, after the breaks and holidays. So I just think it gives everybody a little more time.
Jim?
Chris, uh, say again, what was the downside to that voluntary, uh, coming back on the 7th for some kids? What, what, I know, I know Rob had said, uh, scheduling, so that's one downside. Anything else?
Yeah. It's difficult for a teacher to, okay, is, is this child in? They're not in. Are they live streaming today? Are they back full? Are they not back full? It, it's, it's not ideal, obviously. The, the whole year hasn't been ideal, but it's certainly far from ideal.
And I, I support the 12th.
Matthew? So?
I think you have enough people for the 12th already, John. I would, I would prefer to let people make their own decision. And at the point where I feel as though we, we've been as accommodative as, as we can. Uh, and there are a lot of people who want to get back and that's their choice. But if the votes are there for the 12th, then that's what's going to take.
Jimmy? Thanks for the talk. There's enough of 12.
So Mrs. Hines will make that change and make sure people are alerted to that. Thank you very much.
Please.
Can I make a motion that we actually, um, as a board, get together and say something to the Department of Health, to Mr. Malone and speak out against the testing of these students unnecessarily?
I'm fine with it. I think we should send Mackenzie's letter to him. I think her letter was great when she sent it.
Her letter was phenomenal.
I'm fine with it. Sarah and Jim, uh, excuse me, Laura and Jim?
I'm good with that too.
Chris, some homework?
Not a problem. Thank you.
Sorry, one more thing. Could we, could we do it like where we do it soon? We don't have to wait for the next board meeting? We can call a special Zoom meeting, all approve the letter and move on so that we, we're not waiting two more weeks?
I don't even know if you need to write, Chris. We can write the letter, share it with everyone. I don't know if you need to even, uh, have a special necessarily around it. We're all in agreement to do it.
Great. Thank you.
We'll share the language. Yes. Well, thank you very much.
No problem. Great job. Uh, on the top of page two, we are in letter F, approval of minutes for the March 10th and March 17th, regular and special board meeting. Can I have a motion by Meredith, seconded by Jimmy? All in favor? Laura and Jim, if you guys could just raise your hands. Good. Thank you. Opposed, motion is carried. Number two is visitors. Public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to an agenda item will go first. Everyone will be given three minutes to speak. Mr. Bozzella? Please. There's a little button on the, on the block here. Yep.
Thank you.
Dr. Pelletieri, Agarwal, board members, cabinet members. Appreciate you letting me speak today. Um, my name is Lou Bozzella and I am currently, um, the commissioner of basketball for SCIA. Um, I know that, uh, during your last meeting, uh, there was some questions and comments that had come up in regarding, uh, security and, um, I believe, custodians.
Just do me a favor. I'm sorry. Just move the mic right in front of your mouth. Just only because with the mask, it's just difficult. You can pull the whole mic towards you if you could.
Is that better?
Perfect. Thank you.
So as you know, uh, we did not have a basketball season in, uh, 2020. A lot of things that didn't happen, but, um, I did pull an invoice from, uh, January before the pandemic. And this is the facility use. We had, uh, 10 elementary schools and three middle schools, um, on our, uh, schedule and we had put, uh, permits in for those. We totaled about 614 hours and 81 hours were for the weekend. Um, and 533 of those hours were for the weekday. So it kind of breaks up 87%, 13% weekday versus weekend. And we actually do pay custodial fees, um, on the weekends. And it is a line item in our bill. So for one, two, for the, uh, nine days in the month of uh, January that we played at Seneca, Sammaset and Sagamaw, we paid $52 a day for a total of $468 for the month for custodial fees. I don't know if you knew that, sir. The other thing is, when we put the permits in, the permits go in for a total of, let's say, four hours during the the week. But obviously, we only use two hours of those four since we don't keep the kids out past eight-thirty, nine o'clock tops. And then on the weekends, it's mostly the older kids. That's the middle school. And actually, we we have a high school players playing. We have a total of eight hundred children in our program in basketball. Um, and we have every age group from first grade all the way up to seniors, the both boys and girls. And we don't deny anybody. If you can compete physically, you can comply. For some of the children with special needs, we have a special program, SEPTA, that we run, which is different from regular competition within Cyag, but we do work with those children also. Um, one of the other things that had come up was the security. Now, in watching the last board meeting, I I think I heard someone say that they were concerned that the schools were unlocked or open. That is not the case. The schools are locked at all times while we are in there. Sometimes, uh, security will need us, obviously on the weekends, since there's nobody in the building until we get there. Um, sometimes there might be SATs or something going on in the morning, but usually they unlock doors for us and then we go straight to the gym. What we've done in in Cyag is we hire home monitors, high school kids, moms, dads, somebody that can come and sit and watch the door for us. So, um, during the weekend, basically, they make sure that, you know, while the coaches and the kids are going into the gym and starting the game or waiting for the game to start, while others start to come in, they make sure they open and close the door for them. And then once everybody goes into the gym, pretty much, as a Cyag rule, we don't allow people in the hallways. Now.
Excuse me, sir. There is a three-minute time limit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bozzella.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we we do try and prepare you through, uh, through Cyag. Sorry for taking up extra time.
Please, Mr. Bozzella, please.
Hey, Lou.
Yep.
Bro, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Got a quick question. This is hard because we're getting rushed, I think, in a sense. We haven't met the stakeholders and stuff. So I know we don't usually go for the back and forth question. But of the eight hundred or so basketball players you have on an average year, I know last year was an average, so it's hard to say. But average year percentage of those eight hundred are Sajem residents.
Um.
Guess them. It doesn't have to be.
Ninety-eight percent.
Thank you.
And Sajem gets priority.
Thank you.
We are Sajem. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening, everybody. Don't look up, forgive me. At my age, I can't remember everything. I think I had to write it. My name is Mark Brown. I'm the President of the Sajem Youth Advisory Group. I am here to speak for myself as a taxpayer and Sajem homeowner. I am also here representing Cyag, its participating families in our organization, and hopefully all Sajem children in my community. We are all Sajem. We are Sajem proud. I submitted a letter to the Superintendent of the Sajem School District and to you all here tonight. I will try not to repeat myself too much. Sorry, I got a respiratory thing, so. I zoom in on the school board meeting and follow social media as much as I can to get a pulse of what is happening in our community. The social media part is hard to follow. There are so many untruths being told about.
Mr. Brown, you can pull it down if you want. Just please.
There are so many untruths being told out there by people that really don't know or realize how important the voluntary youth organizations are to our community and our school district. Not everyone is going to appreciate everything we do at Cyag, and that is understandable. I guess I feel as President getting Cyag's message out, I thought our reputation over the last fifty, sixty years were good enough. Times are changing, new faces in the community, and different goals and agendas are on the table. I promise I will be more proactive communicating our goals and agendas and make sure our school district leadership and community know the true value Cyag is to all of us. I'll reach out to the school district administrators, the school board, and the community board so you can get to know me and the Cyag family better. I love the Sajem School District, our community, Cyag, and most of all, all the children of our community. They don't have to play to Cyag to be supported and loved. Cyag runs numerous programs and fundraises that support the school districts, programs, clubs, and sports teams. I include some of the groups in my letter that I submitted to the board earlier tonight. I am hearing more and more lately why the school district and community supporting Cyag and other Sajem volunteer organizations, which it would be unfair of me to mention the other organizations by name because I do not represent them. But in my message tonight, I include them as well. In my personal opinion, Sajem youth volunteer organizations, with ninety-five percent Sajem children participating in their organizations that have unpaid volunteers, deserve discounted rates and a first rate of refusal for school facilities. It is the only way we can survive and continue to support Sajem School District and our children. Most of the kids that play beside are from working class families that struggle from day to day to pay their bills. Especially now with this COVID pandemic draining their resources, now, most of all, we have to be there for them. Yes, I heard, to my dismay, let them decide to go to travel or an organization that charges thousands of dollars to participate. It's their choice. No, they don't. They don't have a choice. It's not happening. We cannot afford those prices. Most of the children that participate in our organization, although I consider them superstars for participating in youth sports, are not all go to compete at a level to make the school teams, play travel ball, or pay exuberant fees other organizations charge. These children will have nowhere else to go to play. In closing, I hope and I pray, before you vote on this resolution tonight, you pause a moment, you think about the resolution, listen to the speakers tonight, read my letter, and listen to the other Sajem volunteer youth organizations. Meet with us, get to know our organizations again, hear our concerns and goals for our children and community. Let us work together, help us reach our goals for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Mr. D?
Good afternoon, Dr. Palteri, School Board, Cabinet. My name is Terrence D. I know many of you, but I'm the President of the Sajem Sports Club. Uh, we're collaborative collaboratively with our friends over at Cyag. Um, and I agree with some of the points that Mark just made tonight. Um, I want to discuss discuss two topics. I did send the board an email and I did copy some of the Cabinet. An item was brought up. It hasn't been discussed yet, but policy fifteen hundred. Um, I know it was tabled to make a revision to that. The number is not firm. Mr. Brown, thank you for applying to my email. Can I get an answer on that? Is that something that's going to be discussed? Are we going to look at that?
We weren't going to, we weren't going to talk about it tonight. We weren't going to just talk about facility use.
Okay, I'll move on to the next. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, as far as facility usage, I see it from both sides, as a taxpayer, as a volunteer, running a youth organization in our community. I understand we we obviously have budget constraints and things that we have to operate. Um, I asked that, there was a motion put out to vote on a nineteen-dollar an hour fee. Uh, I think we've acted on that very prematurely. I think that we need to step back, have a meeting with the stakeholders that are involved in this, that this would directly affect, see what their needs are, see what their their programs they're running, take a look at where we're at with the COVID constraints and uh, the COVID constraints and what has happened with our registration data, where we stand and what programs are still trying to currently operate on. Um, I don't think a flat fee across the board is the way to go. It's my personal opinion. We all have different needs. We all have different usage. Our our sports cheer has different needs than lacrosse. Football, because it's run in the fall, requires lighting. Airports are much different. I think taking a step back, pausing the motion, letting us speak, again, collectively as stakeholders and collaborate with each other, youth organizations, the school district, let's look at our properties. We have plenty of space. We have plenty of facilities. How can we consolidate? What can we do as a group to improve the financial standing if it is a line item that we we feel that we need to address? Um, because the last thing that any of us want to see would be student services cut or or any kind of faculty services, maintenance, just for the sheer operation of, you know, outside usage. So I asked at the school board table that 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 motion that's currently on the table right now. Um, I I don't know if you're still planning on voting on it tonight, but there was a motion made at the at the meeting on March tenth. Um, and and we schedule a meeting amongst all the stakeholders and see if we can collaboratively collectively come to an agreement on how we can move forward in some way, because this is going to have a tremendous impact, um, not only on on the youth groups, but on the way that these programs operate. Programs like SEPTA, PTA, it's it's not just the lacrosse and football and basketball and baseball. There are other other technicals of this that that is going to hit that we're probably not even.
Thank you very much, Mr. D. Mr. Lips?
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Um, my name is Tommy Lips. Uh, I'm the Director of Coaching for Sajem Youth Soccer League. I'm here tonight to discuss the opportunity of the Long Island Slammers Soccer Club. It's a five oh one C three. Um, we are partners with Sajem Slammers, Smithtown Slammers, and East Islip Slammers. I'm here to discuss the opportunity of presenting an embellishment to the Waverly Avenue Fields. Uh, we're currently looking to embellish the property, two turf fields with lights at the start and potentially increasing that, you know, over time as finances become available. In return, we would like the school district to use the property and we'd like to have a partnership with the school district and most importantly, with the Sajem Soccer Club in the community. The Sajem School District would have the opportunity to use the property uh, every day during school use to the hours of five, five-thirty. I have a written proposal that I could easily send whoever would would receive it. And we would be looking to establish this relationship, a long-term partnership, would be at no cost to the school district. Our finance people would handle all the finances and absorb the entire cost. And in return, the school district gets to use it on a daily basis and we would be coming in. Uh, the Long Island Slammers and Sajem would be using it at a certain time in the evening and on weekends. But my proposal is to install two to three turf fields with lights at no cost to the school district. School district gets full access to it during the school hours. It'll be in the usage proposal. Um, when I send this usage proposal, it would be negotiable, so it is not set in stone. It is just a temporary proposal. So my name again is Tommy Lips. I worked with Sajem Youth Soccer League for five years, a parent educator for twenty. Uh, I believe in the community support and the community culture. And this is one of the reasons why we created this affiliation with the community clubs, keep them viable and healthy and strong. So I don't want to waste any more of your time, but I'm here to present an opportunity for the school district uh, to have an embellishment on the properties and have the community and, most importantly, our partner, the Sajem Youth Soccer Club, have access to the facility as well. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Mrs. Berisi?
Good evening. Um, my name is Maureen Berisi and I am retiree from Sajem. And I'm here to discuss the firing of my son, who works at Sajem School District as a custodian. On his behalf, um, it's more of a behavioral thing, or outbursts and speaking. He has never had a complaint from a teacher, a student, a child. He's never had a problem with doing his work. It's his outbursts. He has had a meeting with the Superintendent and Christine Abel Eden. And he has apologized. He has brought in a letter from his psychologist. Um, he is set up for a schedule for um, psychiatrist. Um, he has disability. He has depression, OCD, parts of bipolar. He asked for a second chance and they told him they would get back with him. They had suspended him for three weeks without pay, which wound up being a month without pay. And the answer was, resign and you'll get your back pay. He's been with the school district for thirteen years. In the past, Sajem School District, as a family, has stood behind their employees. I have known numerous people who have been in rehabilitation, numerous times that worked for the school district, and they held their job. He has a wife, two girls, going into college. He's going to lose his job, his benefits. His wife had to take part-time work instead of a full-time job to be home for her children due to the COVID situation. He's going to lose his home and everything else. I'm only here on his behalf and I feel he deserves a chance to correct his problems, which is a medical problem. Thank you.
Mrs. Barnes?
Good evening. My name is Laura Barnes. I mean, now I'm Brian White for twenty years. And we've been part of the family, like my mother and I said, for at least thirteen years, the whole land of my daughters. Um, she's almost fourteen and we consider ourselves Sajem family as well. And I just wanted to advocate for him that he had realized he had a problem and he's trying to help himself. And I know Sajem will give him opportunity to better himself. And he just wanted to respectfully ask you to consider giving his job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to move to the middle of page two to business items, consent agenda A through D. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Jimmy, seconded by Rob. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Number four is personnel, consent agenda A through I. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Matthew, seconded by Laura. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Number five is personnel, support staff, consent to consent agenda A through H. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Rob, seconded by Jimmy. All in favor? Opposed? Can't see, I can't see them up there. I'm sorry. Are they good? Motion is carried. Number six. We're going to do letter A first, approval of SSA memorandum of agreement. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Rob, seconded by Matthew. All in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Letter B is approval of proposition two. This is the capital improvement. Yeah, any question? I'm sorry, excuse me. Motion by Bill, seconded by Jimmy. Any questions? All in favor? Yeah, please.
Correct. You're just approving it to be on the ballot. The voters will still have to vote on this in May to approve.
Do you know, have we seen the ballot yet? Is it going to be on the back or the front?
Uh, the proposition two, this proposition will be right underneath the budget proposition.
The proposition two, this proposition will be right underneath the budget proposition. And then typically on the back is all the trustees.
Thank you.
Yeah, once that's finalized, I usually put that on the website in the budget section, just so people can see ahead of time what the ballot will look like.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number seven, contracts consent agenda A through D. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Bill, seconded by Matthew. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number eight is a donation. Letter A by Christina Parata Hughes. Any question? Can I please have a motion? Motion by Rob. Seconded by Matthew. Any question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number nine is a budget transfer, approval of budget transfer $50,000 or greater. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Rob, seconded by Jimmy. Any questions? Please, Meredith, and then Rob.
John, would you just explain to the community what these two are for, please?
There's two separate budget transfers that are for the board's approval this evening. The first one is taking $275,000 in available surplus from our health insurance account code. And we're moving that to our safety compliance line for BOSI's. That's basically being utilized this year for our water and lead testing and things of that nature. And $75,000 to cover some additional costs in our long-term disability benefits. The second one is just sort of Mr. Renda taking a number of his various account codes where he has some available surplus, that he's taking $191,000 in various lines, like his equipment repair line, his communication aid line, services line, WAN line, et cetera. And he's bundling those monies basically to move them into supplies and materials. This year, he incurred a lot of additional unanticipated costs for things like toner, for headsets, for remote mice, supplies and materials for the computers that were loaned to the students, things of that nature. We're just shifting monies from his existing codes into those other codes, so he has those monies available for supplies that he'll need now to the end of the year.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number 10 is committee on special educations consent agenda A through B. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Meredith, seconded by Bill. Any questions, Laura? Now, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number 11 is monthly reports, board committee reports. Does anybody like to go?
The budget vice committee meeting tomorrow at 7:00, 7:00 PM, 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Review the presentation that was conducted tonight. Their plan is to put together a presentation for the board prior to the adoption of the budget. I would guess the first meeting in April, early April, September. Pretty much they're moving along. They're really productive.
Jim?
Yeah, the legislative committee, we haven't met in a while. As you know, the board gave us the charge of seeking reimbursement for any COVID-related expenses. John was kind enough to give us an update at the time of the expenses that were incurred thus far. But as you guys know, this is kind of an ongoing expense stream here with COVID. So the committee was, they kind of directed me to go back to get a more in-depth expenditure look at these COVID-related expenses. And also to what the CARES Act funded back. And now, of course, with the $1.9 trillion COVID relief bill, what part of that may come back to aid us in those reimbursements? So really, we're kind of in a limbo land now. There's no point in going out and trying to lobby any politicians for reimbursement if we don't know exactly where we are. And of course, John with the budget and all, I couldn't really press him into getting any of these figures any tighter. So we're kind of a work in progress, says it right now.
Anyone else? So?
My issue is completely separate. I'm going to be making the motion in a few moments, maybe more than a few moments, but I'm going to speak about some things, right, for the next few minutes. So I made a few notes so that I wouldn't forget anything, what I want to say. So before I get into this, I want to make clear. I don't want to insult anyone. I'm not accusing anyone of anything. But I think there are some important things that need to be said here in open session. And it needs to be before the community. And people need to be aware of these things and thoughtful about them. And I hope that newer board members will hopefully be edified in some way by what I'm about to say. If in the process of that, I should insult someone, I apologize already because that's not my intent. But sometimes the cold, hard truth hurts and we need to hear it. So I'm going to take on a trip down memory lane a little bit. And then I'm going to get to the motion that I will make. So I was elected to this board back in 2015. When I came onto this board, we were at an incredibly dysfunctional point here in Sachem. The board members were factionalized. They were at odds with one another. People didn't talk to one another. People spoke within their own small groups. And quite frankly, it was difficult to get anything meaningful done and it led to a state of decay. The district was in a terrible state of decay, in my opinion. We did a lot to reverse many of those things in the early years that I was on the board. In the last year, I would say, I've seen reversal of those things and we seem to be moving back in that direction. And that concerns me greatly. In two months' time, when I was on this board, that September after being sworn in on July, maybe 1st or shortly thereafter, we were told that we had $16,000 left in our unassigned reserves. For all intents and purposes, for the community, that meant that we were flat broke. We had no money. In going back and looking at what happened, it's incredibly clear to me that the district was misrun. And the board played a large role in that. And I don't think it was an intentional thing. We're dealing with a budget here of over $300 million. It's an incredibly technical budget. Board members oftentimes don't have any experience in the realm of budgeting. Some of us do. In my own situation, I've never dealt with a $300 million budget, but I've run several small businesses and been involved in such things, so I have some degree of knowledge looking at this. But I was completely blindsided by the fact that we had $16,000 left. And it had a lot to do with board members. We're not paying attention to the appropriate things, what was going on. And things were being mismanaged here in the district. If you go back in time, you'll see that, I believe, back in, let's see, 2007, 2008, 2009, in those particular years, it was a 0% budget increase put out by the Board of Education. That was not helpful to our state of finances. Shortly thereafter, I'm sure most of the people in this room remember, back in 2008, we went into the recession previous to the one that we just came out of. The financial, the Great Financial Recession was a terrible event that left the state coffers in horrible shape, where we didn't have enough money to fund the state government. And as a result of that, the state government enacted the gap elimination adjustment program. You hear people talk about GEA. John mentioned it back in his presentation a little while ago. In short, what that means, because I know nobody knows what that means, but it means is the state said, we have no money because we haven't been taking in the tax revenue and we need to claw back money from our aides in the school districts so that we can fund the state mechanisms that need funds. So we lost tremendous sums of money. And people will blame, and I've heard people blame, that particular event on the things that happened here in Sachem in 2015, where we ended up with $16,000 in the bank. While that was a contributing factor, it should be understood that every other school district in New York State encountered GAL, DEA, just as Sachem did. The difference is in the way that it was handled here. As somebody who works in a school and a school that's pretty affluent and has a large amount of reserves on hand, there were cuts that were made. They were painful. We felt those cuts. Here in Sachem, the cuts did not take place. The cuts that were made did not stick. And as a result of that, we ended up with no money in the bank within five years' time. In fact, my own little back-of-the-envelope calculation this afternoon, as I was thinking about these things, it looks like we probably burned through in that period of time, roughly 2010 to 2015. John can correct me if I'm wrong, in the area of about $40-plus million of reserves were burned up very rapidly. We were running budgets that were actually coming in at a deficit for five years straight. In other words, our tax revenue was short of the expenses that the district was engaging in year to year. And it left us in that particular predicament. The simple truth of it was, difficult decisions were not made to keep this district in a fiscally sound position. That is what happened. Make no mistake about it. Now, I was not here at that time and I did not attend every board meeting. My understanding is that our business official at that time expressed to the board, he was not comfortable with those budgets. But yet, the board approved those budgets and it got us into that particular position. We started to correct that and we made some very significant cuts that September. It was in that room back there behind us and it was a pretty painful thing to endure. We scrounged around and tried to figure out what exactly we could cut from the Sachem budget. And many people lost their jobs here in Sachem. Many of those people who lost their jobs, I remember, were custodians. The sad thing about that is that some of those custodians, this was the best job they were ever going to have in their whole life. And yet, we took it away from them because of mismanagement of this district. That's how that happened. The people with the most education kept their jobs, the most employable people. The ones who were the least employable lost their jobs and suffered because this board, at that time, did not do the things that it needed to do. We made the cuts. We survived. Gap elimination adjustment was done away with. The following year, we began to build reserves and I believe it's about when John stepped in and we tried, we began to right the ship and build our reserves back up. And since then, we've gotten ourselves into a very good, sound position with solid reserves. However, here we are, coming out of another crisis, this COVID crisis, where once again, the budget will be under tremendous pressure, as John has pointed out. One of the things we also did in that period of time, which we immediately set to work doing, was evaluating how to maximize the use of the resources that the district had to generate revenue. And one of the things that stood out, that some of the board members had been very much aware of for some time before I ever got on the board, was that we had this property, the Waverly Fields, the one that Mr. Lips came and spoke about just a few moments ago. And if my memory serves me correctly, those fields were being used exclusively by the SYSL Youth Soccer League, a wonderful organization that, just like Cyag, helps many children and provides a place for them to play. But the amount of money that they were paying for the exclusive use of those fields was woefully inadequate for what they were receiving. As my memory serves me, they were paying $100 a month for those fields. And I assume most people have a sense of those fields, the scope of those fields, and so on. That's a valuable piece of real estate to pay $100 a month. Their fees were raised to $500 a month. We decided to put a request or proposal out and met tremendous resistance to ask people to come and tell us, what would you pay us to use these fields to help restore or give us some revenue to this district? We did that and we ended up in an agreement that SYSL partook in, where we were able to get rent of $18,000. Quite the increase from $500. And that agreement worked out for a while, but it no longer is working out. So we haven't received that $18,000 because some of the people left the consortium that grouped up with SYSL. The reason I bring this field up, because I believe that those fields were symptomatic of the problems that led us to where we were with the $16,000 in the bank. Here we were with a very valuable asset and yet we were giving it away. The community's property, giving it away for money that didn't come nearly close to what we could get for that field. And it's not because we don't like SYSL, it's just because it's an asset that's valuable to us. Now, we are in the process, once again, of being asked, as you saw tonight, from people about those particular fields. And I'm confident, because of things that I've heard in the community, that SYSL is interested in those fields again. And I also believe, based upon things that I've seen here in this boardroom and things that I've heard board members say in texts, in conversation, whatever it may be, that there are a group of board members that might very well be of a mind, we should just give those fields at a very low rent, or maybe no rent at all, in fact, to SYSL. That would be a movement back in the wrong direction for this board to take. It would put us right back in the same mindset that got us to the point where we had $16,000 in the bank. And we would be acting in a fiscally inappropriate manner, I believe. One of the things that was circulated amongst this board, that I'm sure I think everybody saw, it was provided to us by one of the board members, was the 990 IRS form for SYSL. Now, that's by no means a comprehensive financial balance sheet for SYSL. But one of the things that struck me, that quite frankly amazed me that I was unaware of, was that fiscal year 2018, 19 for SYSL, from July 2018 through, I'm sorry, through Ju-, where is it? July 2018 through June 2019, they had raised revenue of just shy of $1 million, $900,000 and change. That's a lot of money for a nonprofit to raise, and I'm happy that they were able to raise that kind of money. There were many expenses that they had in that period of time as well. One of the expenses that caught my eye was that SYSL spends $600,000-plus in that particular year on quote-unquote training. I do not know what that training entails. I'm sure it's happening. I'm sure it's valuable for the children that play in that particular league. But every organization needs to make judgment calls about how they spend their money. And I think if we're asking a group to pay a reasonable rent, I think you may have to reallocate some of your money in terms of training versus field usage for your group. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to do. I'm not asking them to let us scrutinize their books and undergo some kind of forensic audit. But I think these are things that the board needs to consider when we're thinking about, if we have a going concern, an entity that is perhaps a nonprofit, but is profitable in some way and can pay a meaningful rent on the property that they want to use. I don't think there should be discussions about giving such a property away. And when I say give it away, I mean, let it be used for 40-plus years, practically no meaningful rent whatsoever, when you adjust for inflation for all intents and purposes. It's free. Now, my hope is that we will not return to those days that I've just expressed. But yet, I believe we're heading in that direction. And it makes me sad and it makes me angry too. And I don't think it's because people sitting up here on this board are bad people. I think it's just because some people are caught in an echo chamber and they're hearing just one thing and one thing only. And just like any political arena, people have one another's ears, right? There are people, everybody knows about the lobbyists up in Albany and the lobbyists in Washington DC, and it leaves a bad taste in our mouths and you say, that's bribery what they're doing. And no, it's not bribery under the law. What it is, is it's access. And that access allows you to bend the will of the elected official to do your bidding. And there's a benefit derived from that. In light of all those things that I just expressed, here's my motion. My motion is to put an immediate request or proposal out for the Waverly Avenue Fields. I would like the RFP to be issued by the end of this week. And I would like the board to approve it by Friday for the sale or lease of the Waverly Avenue Fields. Not that we necessarily would be selling them or leasing them, but as we enter into any discussions about what we're going to do with those fields, we should know what they're worth and what money could be brought into this school district. As I expressed before, in 2015, that September, we were looking around and clawing for $1,000 here, $10,000 there. And it was very difficult to do and it cost people their jobs. I don't want to see this district go back. That's my motion. Can I get a second?
All right, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pass up, yeah, I'm gonna pass up the public comment, because there's nobody else for public comment, right? And we're gonna move to board discussion, and since Waverly Fields is first and second, but we're gonna have the discussion, please.
First and foremost, Bill, I think you missed your calling for a children book author. Because what you said there, okay, about what happened back in two thousand eleven, twelve, okay, that board making bad decision, is rhetoric. It really is, it's rhetoric. You said you intended to, you didn't intend any means back then, okay? You really didn't, okay? But the reality, the reality of it is, is that that gap elimination aid, okay, was a result of Governor Cuomo taking a amount of money away from Sagem in a disproportionate rate. Okay, there's articles written in Newsday. There was senators lobbying, there was, there was people spoken to. It's documented information that Sagem got the short end of the stick. And even Senator Flanagan commented in Newsday that he didn't know why Sagem took such a big hit, the biggest hit in New York State. There was no understanding. But on top of that, okay, just clarification, Sagem was receiving seven million dollar increase every year in TRS and IRS, okay? As well as an eight million dollar increase every single year in health insurance. So when you tally that up, and the state said to the Board of Education, okay, use your reserves, you're gonna get the money next year, that's the promise we, okay? And we did exactly that, and federal government gave us money, use your reserves, keep people employed, which we did, and you're going to get the money back next year. Except that, the state lied. And it's hard to believe, the state lied to the school district. It never happens, okay? They held on to that money for five to six years, okay? And Sagem saw a loss of anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty million dollars in aid. Now, if you think that this didn't happen again, okay, over the next five years, that we wouldn't be in the same position, you're delusional, you're really delusional. Right? There's no way a district could survive using its reserves, okay, over a five-year period, keep people employed and keep programs and keep clubs and keep things, okay? Without looking, you know, bringing in all your reserves. So when you say it's mismanagement, okay? We're sitting on sixty-three million dollars with your reserves right now. Now, John, some of that money, that's not just free money, that money's spoken for, right? Is that correct? We have liabilities that are going to be paid for out of that, out of those reserves.
You earmarked about eleven million dollars to use in this school year.
Okay, but we have other liabilities. So we really don't have sixty-three million dollars, some of that money is earmarked.
Well, all of it's earmarked, other than unassigned fund balance.
Which would be four percent of our total budget, which is what?
About thirteen million.
Thirteen million, so it's all earmarked, okay, for reasons. Now, I would think that after years being on the board, you would understand how budgets work, okay? Fund balance, okay, has liabilities attached to it. Cyag has a Form 900, okay? They show a certain amount at the end of the year, but they have fees associated that's going to come out of it. Sagem Soccer has a certain amount of money, okay, in fund balance, it says it right on the Form nine, fund balance, okay? Certain liabilities, in fact, probably most of that is going to come out with things like training. You wanted to know about training, okay? You know, unfortunately, in, you know, in the seventies and eighties, it was a lot easier to get parents to actually volunteer to train soccer teams and basketball teams. Today, you have to hire people. And as the kids get better and better, you have to hire people that know what they're doing, to teach the kids what, what they're supposed to be doing. You know, my daughter plays in Smithtown, she has a professional soccer player that's training them. It doesn't work for free, it costs money, okay? So fund balance has liabilities attached to it. So when you look at a Form nine, Form nine or Form nine hundred, whatever, nine ninety, okay? It's not an accurate picture of, of what the organizations have in their accounts. You know, it doesn't, you know, fifty years ago, forty years ago, that field, that, that garbage behind Waverly was garbage, there was trees, there was garbage. That, that organization unified their property, okay? They made it what it was, they put hundreds of thousands of dollars, it was going through old board packets, you know, spending eight, nine thousand dollars in leveling a parking lot, you know? Here's an organization, okay, that, that services thirteen hundred of our kids, an organization, the president's back there, that's willing to work with other organizations, I think Terrence D should touch base with Anthony Capiano, he's willing to work with other organizations to make that property Sagem kids, okay? And unfortunately, if, if you think that the lack of, of money that we get from that field is, is the downturn, okay, to losing a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million dollars, you're crazy, it's not possible, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars divided into three hundred and thirty-three million dollars, okay? How would impact the district, okay? It has very little impact on the district, in fact, I'll break it down, a person making a hundred thousand dollars, it's a difference of about sixty-five dollars a year, either in salary or loss in salary. That's not, that's not a game changer for, for a district making three hundred and thirty million dollars. But the fact of the matter is, is that these organizations provide a service for our kids, okay? No different than before and after care, watching our, our children, okay? People play a, a small premium, okay, for, for their children to be watched at the school and before school. These youth organizations provide a service for our kids. Right? They bring our kids onto a team, okay, and they, they, they allow them to be welcomed, to be accepted. Kids that maybe, may never ever be good to make a school team, okay, are now considered, okay, part of a team. And, and it's invaluable, it's invaluable. When you look at some of the other districts around us, right? All of the big districts around us don't charge their, they don't charge the youth organizations anything, zero. Middle Country, Bayport, Bayport Blue Point, Connect Point, zero. I don't understand, the fact that we would evict, okay, and I'm gonna use the word evict, thirteen hundred of our own children, our own Sagem children, all for the property that their parents pay school taxes on, okay? Because we want the highest bidder, okay, is absurd, is absolutely absurd. That property's been used for, by our children, Sagem children, and just for the record, my children don't even use that property. They don't use buildings either, okay? So I'm not fighting because it affects me personally, okay? I'm saying that that property, it, it is a needed property for our Sagem kids that changes the lives of kids. And it shouldn't just go to the highest bidder, okay? Because I gotta be honest with you, I have a hard time with a private company coming in and using that property, throwing our kids off their property and using it for the purposes of a revenue source to generate hundreds of thousands of dollars for their business. I have a major problem with it, Bill. But the thing is that if you're going to regurgitate history, you gotta get it right. I was here, I was in front of nine hundred people, I know exactly what happened. Believe me, I know what happened. I, I started this job, we should put the first picture up, my hair was black, I got the pelotaries. It's not black anymore, all right? Unfortunately, I've gone to Albany many times, I've spoken to legislators many times, I know what happened. Right? John Appolitano, one of our graduates who wrote for Newsday, wrote a beautiful article, okay, about what happened in Sagem, okay? It's on her website, right? It details everything that happened. We were treated in a way, and the fact that, that we went out with zero percent budgets, okay? Did not impact our big cut, okay? A comment was made by a senator, well, maybe because, you know, they felt that you were, you know, fiscally stable, you could, you could absorb a bigger cut. That's the comment that was made. But the reality of it was, is that when we had ten million dollars left over, we didn't put it into a capital reserve, we gave it back to the taxpayers the next year to lower their taxes. You know why we did that, Bill? Because we were fully reserved, okay? And what happens, Mr. Peep, when you're fully reserved and you reserve above, above and beyond when you're fully reserved, what happens? Explain, please.
Well, there are certain, it's not as simplistic as what is over reserved.
If you're supposed to have fourteen million dollars in reserve, and you decide, unassigned.
That's unassigned fund balance, obviously, we have five other reserves.
So we were fully reserved back then, and we, one above and beyond, okay, what would happen? I know the answer to my question.
Yeah, I mean, you weren't fully reserved, so I don't want to mislead anybody, you didn't have a capital reserve.
We didn't have a capital reserve, you're right, we didn't.
If you had one, you could have funded it.
We also had a tax pack that came out and made sure that we didn't have a capital fund.
You could get cited by the state controller for having excess.
We would've got our hands slapped by the state controllers, that's what would've happened. We would've got our name in the paper, we would've got our name in the paper, along with Brentwood and some of the other school districts that Sagem overtaxed at people and held on to the money. So we gave the money back to the community to lower their taxes, that's how we got the zero percent increases. You know, you could spin it any way you want, okay? But unfortunately, I was here, okay, I was in, live in person, okay? You weren't, so you're believing the stuff that you're reading online.
John, how many different reserve accounts does the school district have? Yeah, I, I'll, I'll pull up the report for you, I don't want to misspeak, it's probably, I don't know, six, seven? Roundabout, six or seven reserve accounts. So the unassigned reserve account that Rob is referring to, be clear, to not obfuscate what's going on here, is but one reserve account. When you are running short on money, is it not possible to move money out of those other reserve accounts to cover expenses, so that you have room in your budget? For the specific purposes those reserves are designed for. Right, which can offset expenses. If you have an employee benefit reserve, you could move those monies to cover those benefits. If you have a retirement reserve, you can cover the retirement expense. Which means you don't have to come up with that money somewhere else. Correct, that's what we did last year, when we balanced the budget, we appropriated nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the TRS reserve to cover the increase in TRS bill. So our problem was not just taking money from our unassigned reserves, it was taking money from every reserve account we had to cover shortfalls because we would not make cuts to make us fiscally sound.
To turn around and say that, that poor decisions were made, and the reason why we went belly up and we went to sixty thousand dollars, because we were charging a hundred dollars per field usage. I'm gonna say it one more time, okay? Those fields belong to taxpayers, okay? They are funded, they are paid for by taxpayers, they were purchased with taxpayer money, okay? They belong to the taxpayers, they don't belong to some private entity that's gonna make profit on it, they belong to our kids. That's it, that's my feeling, so do the buildings.
And if six hundred thousand dollars goes to training expenses, we are funding somebody's for-profit company, that's what we're doing.
Jim?
In the world of economics, we call that rent seek, exploiting your government connections so that someone else can make money.
Just a point the board of first, this motion have a second, I didn't see it.
Yes, it was Bill and then Sarah.
Okay, so it has a second. My, my opinion on this, my opinion on this is I see absolutely no downside to an RFP. I mean, we should be looking at what the value of our, our properties are, I, I don't see any downside to it, I'm gonna support it.
Great, thanks, Laura.
So, and again, to echo what Jim just said, if we want the use of our fields, even anybody who's portraying me as anti-youth league or anti-Cyag or anti-SSC, anti-S-S-SYSL doesn't really know me. I, I've supported youth leagues through my entire time at Sagem, I still do, I'm still at the PAL complex every weekend, and I will always support our youth leagues. But to make it fair and equitable, and, and to give the opportunity for every league to have the chance to use fields at Waverly, I believe in RFP, to see who wants to pay what, or if some of our groups, Rob, like you said, if Terrence wants to get together with Mark Brown and, and come up with something, and, and the board looks at it, and we have our own in-house youth leagues that want to come together to use the fields together, and this way, it's fair and equitable for every league to have that opportunity to use the leagues and come up with a proposal, and the board chooses, even though it's a lot less than other groups may give us, but it's for all our Sagem kids, it's for groups that have ninety, ninety-five percent Sagem kids, and we want to entertain that offer. I think if we go out for an RFP and, and get those offers and we can compare them, that is fiscally responsible, as a board trustee, in my opinion, to do. So I would be in favor of an RFP for those reasons.
Anyone else? Please.
Chris, we have a, a lease on that property right now, right?
You do.
And there are some stipulations that may allow us to, to do something like that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I prefer to give the legal advice as to what impact an existing leasehold on the property would have on the RFP process, certainly. You know, there have been some pieces of advice that I've given to the board about that, I'd be needing to be delicate in the manner that I described it, but certainly, that's something that would have to be dealt with as a part of whatever process you'd choose to pursue.
Anyone else? I'll go for a minute. You know, I, as the youngest member of this board, it's a shame that we have all of us adults fighting, and the only people that get hurt are the kids. And then we had Mrs. Hines do a presentation about a do-no-harm policy, and if it's good enough for in the classroom, it should be good enough on the fields. These people are not making money. All these guys in the back, they don't take money. All these coaches that volunteer, they don't take money. So they're keeping it at a, at a cost for these kids that everyone, all kids, can participate in. And it's a shame that we have some that want to put it out to the highest bidder and just take the money and run. When I've talked to Mr. O'Keefe about this, when I first got on the board, and he said he doesn't care if it sits down, we get no money, it has little to no impact on the budget. He said it. It's just a shame, it really is, it's a shame that these guys had to come and take time away from their family. Some of them don't even have kids playing anymore. I don't even have kids, and I think it's wrong what you're doing. Because maybe one day I will, but I don't want them to have to pay eighteen thousand, because guess what happened? They couldn't, because you guys choked them to death. And now this is why we're in the problem that we're in. And if even one kid says they can't afford it, then you did the wrong thing. And shame on all of you, because this, and, and I agree with Rob, and you guys could say whatever you want. They didn't endorse me, Cyag didn't endorse me, they don't endorse. I didn't take money from anybody. So I don't need them to, to wield political influence on anybody. I think it's important that facts are facts, and opinions are opinions, and there's a difference, there's, there's a differentiation when we talk about the two. And not that you hurt my feelings, Bill, but you guys have an agenda too. And you all five got together and decided on something, and that's okay. That's okay, but that'll be remembered by the community, when they pay their tax bill, when ISL goes up another nine hundred next year. And they look back at you and say, you know, what are we getting? Because we dropped the ball on the education this year too. So we need to fix that too, so the least we could do is let the kids, who, a suicide rate, by the way, is higher than ever before. We want kids to participate in sports, I fought. I have a, I, I, my face is probably up its section, and they're throwing darts at it, by the way, because I've made such enemies over there. But we fought to get kids back on the field and back on the court. And now we're saying, you can get back on the court, but you can play six hundred percent more. And if you can't, too bad, because that's what our decision is. You've been on the board, all of you, before I got here, you just, you just went over this policy. You could've changed it from three dollars to four dollars to five dollars and raised it a dollar or two every year, but you didn't. And now during COVID, not everybody's a teacher. Not everybody got paid from March to June for doing their best from working from home. Some people lost their jobs. And some people can't afford a six hundred percent raise or a double or triple tuition. I just think it's a shame that, that, that five people want to get together and just try to milk the community for more. And if it's not the community, give it to somebody else. And let somebody else take our property that's ours. Like, once you sell a property, you never get it back. There's no reason to sell property, and there's no reason to kill the community. That's just how I feel, I'm not, I'm not supporting that, that motion at all.
Alex, so I'd just like to clarify again. I am a supporter of youth leagues, I'm not saying that the field shouldn't be used for Sagem kids. I'm just saying there should be fair and equitable opportunity. As we all received, and Rob said before, even middle country doesn't, doesn't charge their community groups, but, but right on the spreadsheet, it says, but any groups using their facilities are responsible for custodial and security costs. And as on our, one of the memos that John sent too, SSC being at the PAL, I believe the, the rate for the field use was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. So there are our own community groups that are paying a lot of money to use fields that don't have the opportunity to use the Waverly fields. So my point is not to steal the fields from our kids. Anybody who knows me and anybody who's portraying me that way really doesn't know me. Or, or my point is not to steal them from our kids, but to allow all our youth groups equal opportunity and access to use the fields. And that's why I think going out for an RFP to see if we get a consortium of Sagem groups, of all Sagem kids using the fields for reasonable money, would be in the best interest of all Sagem students. That is where I'm coming from, and just so I can say here, because this has also gotten back to me, I am coming in through Zoom, and I- and I have been home and out of work since November twenty-fifth. So dealing with COVID. So I know about lost salary. I know about lost income. I know about hard times. And I always have supported everybody in the SHM community. So for people that have called me and said, oh, I know you don't want to be at board meetings because you don't want to face this, or you don't want to see people or any of that, I just want to let everybody in the SHM community know that I have missed board meetings or have been out, not because I choose to miss them, but I have been home six, since November twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Mr. Clayton, do we have to go out for an RFP to, to get SYSL, SSC and SIAG in a room together to decide to keep it within? Is that something that needs to go out to an RFP?
To have a discussion with those groups does not require an RFP. I know the motion is for an RFP, but to have that discussion does not.
So, so, so we have three SHM groups here, okay? And I, I don't understand and I, I respect, I respect your opinion, um, Laura. But the groups are sitting right in front of us. I'm looking at them, okay? There's no reason why they can't meet to figure out how, how that field could be used for all SHM kids. Whether, you know, listen, SHM Soccer said to me several times, we're willing to work with, with the groups. You know, some of the fields could be a cross field, some of the fields could be soccer fields, okay? They're here. I don't know why we have to go out with an RFP. If our goal is to keep those fields for our SHM kids, if that's really the goal, okay? They're in front of us. They're right here. But why can't we table the motion, okay? And let's look, let's let, you know, them talk and, 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 and figure out a plan how we can keep SHM kids on those fields so private entities not from.
I'll put a motion out to table the motion to allow them to talk so that they can get back to us deciding if they can all get on the same page and, and, and keep it with our kids. Second imagine, Meredith?
So you keep saying that five people, you didn't ask for a vote. You, you didn't ask for a vote from me. You didn't ask for my opinion. You keep saying that five people got together and decided that there should be X, Y, and Z. And we all know that five people do get together quite often around here and it's not the five that you're saying. We do know that things are.
So I don't know.
We do know that things are said quite often and we do know that things can get twisted. So just like Laura, I'm a huge supporter and I think I advocate for children probably more than anyone else on this board. I stand up for the right of all children. I am a sports mom. I am a special ed mom. I stand up for every child. We are currently having this discussion only about sports children. We are currently putting sports ahead of everything else and we are saying that yes, these fields might be valuable to every taxpayer, but we want to make sure that we continue to be that SHM way and talk about only the sports kids. What if the marching band decides to put together an outside marching band group? What if the winter guard decides to do something? We are saying that because SIAG exists, because SYSL exists, because SSC exists, that we're only going to talk about them. Well, when we talk about revenue, when we say that we need to know the value of these fields so we don't get into the trouble that we were in, and yes, there was gap elimination and yes, there was also bad choices made. It was a combination of both. You cannot say that it was one or the other. It was both. And there were bad decisions that were made. So when you sit here and you say that anybody who votes to not go, to, to go out for an RFP doesn't have the children's best interest in mind, I am offended by that because I always have our children's best interest in mind. Unfortunately, you have no children. You're not a taxpayer. You have no skin in the game here. So you're going to sit here and you're going to say, you, you're going to sit here and you're going to say that it doesn't, that we should all sit here. Anybody who votes for an RFP automatically doesn't have the kids' best interest. That's not true. I always have the kids' best interest. But I also, as a board member, took an oath to be fiscally responsible for every single taxpayer. And correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, that's about sixty thousand people? So we're sitting here worrying about eight hundred sports kids here and a thousand sports kids there. And we're putting aside the sixty thousand residents and the taxpayers that live here. We have to do both in a responsible manner. So yes, I will vote with them to go for an RFP because I feel that our responsibility is to every single taxpayer and every single child in this entire community. Not just our sports kids, not just our sports clubs, every single child and every single taxpayer. And we can sit here and we can all spin anything we want. I can tell you anything you want to hear right now and I can probably spin it because I'm a pretty good salesperson, number one in my district. Okay? But I will tell you the truth and the facts are that we need to stand up for every single taxpayer. And if there is something with those fields by leasing them that could bring in revenue that can help every single taxpayer and can help us bring better marching bands and better winter guards and better choruses and better everything, robotics clubs, every single thing, then that's our responsibility. And you said it yourself a few times, one of you, I don't remember which one, so I won't point fingers, but one of you said it at a public board meeting that when SIAG puts in their bids, puts in their, whatever it is, their, their forms, that they gobble up every gym. Well, just like all of you, my phone's been ringing off the hook and I've had people ask me all week how I could be voting against our children, which again, it's not a vote against our children. And then I started to do the math and I started to say, wait a second. SIAG, an organization that my children grew up in, an organization that actually has done a lot of great things for this community. They turned around and they told me that they paid twenty-one thousand dollars last year. So I said for a six-month season, that's twenty-six weeks in math ways. So I pulled out my calculator, a six-month season is twenty-six weeks. And that worked out to be almost three hundred hours a week of gym space. And somebody up here once said, well, you know, SIAG blocks out all of them. And then the president got up this evening and the president said, we block out. And we use it for two hours, but we pay for four. Well, you know what? Maybe they use it for two hours and they should buy two hours.
They buy all four.
Right.
They pay for all four.
They pay for all four because it's only three dollars an hour. So if we're to be responsible and we're going to be told that these children might have to pay too much more, then why are you blocking out four hours when you're only using two? Why are you gobbling up all the gym space? Why does that happen? Why are you doing three hundred hours a week for basketball? And then telling us that it's on us that those kids can't pay the increase? You know what my friend who's a Girl Scout, Mom, how are my Girl Scouts going to pay that? And I said, you know what? You're right, but let's think about it. You have twelve Girl Scouts. It's not a dollar seventy-five a kid. Four, yes, we use six, very scary numbers. We use like six hundred percent increases. Yes, we do use scary numbers. There's lots of scaring going on, lots of scare tactics. But when you look at it and you break it down, it works out to be about a dollar seventy-five per kid, per session with a child group. When you break it down, why are our taxpayers going to have a five hundred thousand dollar a year bill that they will need to come up with? And if you take five hundred thousand dollars a year and you do that several years in a row, what if you still have Governor Cuomo who loves to cut from schools? You eventually will work your way into, what is it people? No reserves in the bank. Why? Because you keep gobbling it up for all the wrong reasons and making poor decisions. I won't make poor decisions. You guys don't want to vote me back in? That's okay. I'm not going to go down where I'm going to make a poor fiscal decision that affects every single taxpayer just because we decided that sports was the most important thing in SHM.
Just real fast again, for facts and for the community, Mr. O'Keefe and, and Dr. Palitari presented us a plan where an extra custodian and an extra security guard that don't currently exist would go into the building. So in, as of today back, it never cost that money. They proposed a six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase for those two individuals per group.
Of which we use, we take in a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I let you finish. I'm going to just finish and then you can go, I promise. I think that we should trust the people who vote yes on the budget, allow them in the buildings to police themselves, trust them to feed their own security and be their own custodial, since custodial during the week is already there while they're there anyway. Let them be adults in the room, since they're paying their taxes anyway. And say, hey, listen, you guys take out a building use. If you abuse it, then we will take it away. But we don't need this six hundred and twenty-three thousand. This is a made up number. It doesn't exist right now. Nobody approved it yet. So it hasn't cost, we didn't put anybody in debt. It hasn't cost non-sports people this money. This was an idea that they came up with. This is an idea I don't support. Because we have adults who do this for the love of it and for the kids and not because they're trying to make a buck. We don't need this six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars spent. They could be their own custodians and their own security. They have a person at the door. They're only letting certain people in. They can come up with a plan similar to what the swim club did for us and say, here's what we're going to do, safety protocol for COVID. Maybe it's no parents, maybe it's one parent. It's up to them. They're going to present it. But I don't think we need to spend this six hundred and twenty-three thousand. That way, that's financially prudent to everybody. And that way, the people that aren't going to spend the money and not play sports, they're not going to be added on any money. So that way, only the people, and they continue to spend the money the way they are.
So just because we've always gotten away with, God forbid, thank God, nothing happening when we didn't have security and this custodians, I'll tell you right now, I'm a PTA mom. I've been at events. I've seen that these custodians have extra work on their hands. They work overtime. They will stay. First of all, overtime, it's not this magic made of thing that, you know, it doesn't just come out of the air. Taxpayers pay for the overtime. So if we're going to turn around and we're going to say, well, let them custodial themselves, let them, let them, uh, police themselves. Just because nothing has ever happened in our buildings doesn't make it right that we don't have somebody there. That is a huge liability risk. And again, I'm not willing to put the taxpayers at risk with liability.
So you've been on the board three years. Now you're worried about liability.
Now it's been brought to our attention.
Phil and Sarah and Laura and, and, and you have all.
It's been brought to our attention? Yes. To be honest, I never realized it. And I wasn't on the board when they made that.
Recommended to toss somebody off a committee and we didn't go with it, just so you know.
A little point of order if I could, Alex?
You know, Jim, I'll let you go after Rob.
There, there are ma, there are so many expenditures that we have in this district that people pay for in their taxes that they don't get a benefit from, right? My eighty-six-year-olds, my eighty-six-year-old neighbor and my ninety-six-year-old neighbor across the street, they don't benefit from new turf fields. They don't benefit from, you know, uh, tracks and, and retaining law. They don't benefit from any of that. Yeah, but they're not knocking on my door complaining that they're paying taxes and other, and other children are benefiting from it. So to say that, that only certain people benefit from this and not everybody benefits, you, you know, you're painting a picture with a very, very broad brush because there's a lot of people out there. We used to have community education for senior citizens. Uh, it was something to give back to them because they don't benefit from the school system. They don't benefit from the, from the sports and that was lost. And in that third group, they, they have nothing. They continue to pay their, their seven thousand dollars in school taxes every year and they get nothing. There's no benefit to them whatsoever.
But when nobody benefits from it, when a district is so fiscally irresponsible that it.
What about, what do we do for those folks?
That it has nothing in the reserves. We're keeping their property values for them.
What do we do?
Because when they're ready to sell their house, they're not going to be selling in a district that absolutely sucks that nobody wants to live in. Because we spent all their money.
Please, Jim.
What, we have.
Sorry, I can't see you all the time. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of points of order here. I mean, we have a motion on the floor, then we have a motion to table on the floor and now we seem to be discussing a facilities fees on, on top before we even got rid of the Waverly motion. So perhaps we could just go back. I think the last motion was a motion to table and vote on that. And if that passes, so be it. If that doesn't, then we go to Bill Coggan's motion and see where that goes. And then we start talking facilities, fee use. I, 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 I just got confused. We, we went from one thing to the other in the same conversation. So can, can I ask the table to, uh, to, uh, finish the motion to table?
No problem, Jim. I'll take care of it. Thank you.
I, I, I understood that we were still in discussion on the, on the issue and it.
It blended.
Yeah, it kind of all crossed over and I know we're giving everybody an opportunity to speak to a number of different issues. So we'll give that opportunity. If there's a motion to table and a second, and that is supported, then that will be what it'll be. And if it is not, then it'll get to the motion.
Mr. Bowman?
All right, real quick. And I know, you know, we all, you know, we have disagreements, but let's try to stay nice to each other. Uh, so I'm just going to give you my two cents on the soccer and the SIAG. The soccer, uh, one of the three of my children enjoyed the soccer for, I think, three years. And unless, have you all been on those fields when they're, when they're doing their thing? It's an amazing site. They do great work. Now, no offense, my son lost interest in soccer. But it's still that, that whole, um, entity, that whole thing, that whole gigantic field with all those players, that adds to our property value. It really does. It makes it, it's an incentive for people to want to live in SHM. It's one of those things. So those fields belong to us. Uh, and just like Rob just said, I never even thought about the elderly people that benefit nothing, but they pay their taxes. That, that soccer program is an important part of SHM. It really is. But that's why I, I'm sorry, I, I disagree with you. I, I, I think it's, I don't care how much money we can make on those fields. That, that is an established uh, organization that does an amazing job. And, and so that's that. That's what I want to say about that. And then about the SIAG.
Let's do that one first. I, I promise you can go first. We'll do that one. We'll go on that and then you can go first. Anyone else on the Waverly side? The tabling motion, please, yeah, please, Jim.
What was the number you used? Even at best case, was it eighteen thousand a month we were getting?
Before I was on the board, they had a consortium of three groups that were paying eighteen thousand dollars a month.
What was John's comment, reference to that on our budget?
I mean, I, I don't want to talk to John, but I don't want to talk to John, but I, I remember him saying.
What does that money mean to our budget, eighteen thousand?
On the scheme of balancing a three hundred and thirty-three million dollar budget, two hundred and sixteen thousand a year is technically insignificant. Thank you.
We have it, please.
Just to make the record clear, John's exact quote was, it's a rounding error when we discussed it initially. Yeah, my point is, but that was the original quote. I remember it well. The point is this, my point was, the problem with those fields is a symptom of a bigger problem. It's not that it resolves our financial issues. There are other issues that go way beyond that that a lot of us have seen here in this boardroom and that some of you didn't see because you weren't here at that time. It's just one more thing of a sweetheart deal that doesn't fiscally make sense. That's all. SYSL does wonderful things. There's no dispute about that. No one's besmirching SYSL. My wish is that SYSL will live long and prosper and is entitled to use all of our fields. The problem is exclusive use of a very valuable set of fields is problematic and unfair to the community at large.
We just said that they could work it out. We, we don't need to do an RFP. They, they could work it out.
So we have a tabling motion on the floor. The tabling motion is for the, this to be. I, I motioned it, yeah. The tabling motion will go first so that the three groups can get together and do it without the RFP. Matthew?
Yeah.
Phil?
Sarah?
Laura? This is the tabling motion. Laura, yes or no? I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
It's okay. Jim?
No.
Meredith?
No.
Mr. Mancoroso? Bob? And I'm a yes to. That fails five-four. We have another motion on the floor to send out an RFP. Matthew?
I, I just wanted to mention about the SIAG thing.
No, no, we're going to do the Waverly first. I promise we're going to go SIAG next. This is just for the, the SIAG. This is just for RFP for Waverly fields. No. Phil?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
James Mancoroso? Rob?
I, I'm going to vote no because, uh, uh, I'm going to be honest here. We're in violation of law. I'd like to get legal opinion from our legal counsel, exec section.
And I'm an O two. The second one that got blended was facilities use. We currently have a policy that it's three dollars an hour for our in-house groups and other groups. Uh, Matthew, please.
You sure?
Yes.
All right. Uh, SIAG, uh, you know, they, they do a great job. My youngest son, the oldest son, uh, my daughter. So I've seen it as a parent. Uh, I did happen to coach basketball for SIAG once, uh, last year for basketball for my son. They needed coaches, so I volunteered. Um, we were at Tamarack. They, uh, Tom, uh, was the guy watching the doors. He was very careful. He didn't let anybody go down hallways. He was on them. There's no need for a security guard. We cleaned up the gym. We made sure no one drank or ate in the gym. Uh, they're a responsible group and it's just like the same thing. Like, how long have they been? Forever they've been in there. So why, why would we disrupt that? And, you know, uh, I don't remember exactly how much it cost, but it was very reasonable. And they provided a great service, you know, again, a service to our kids. It's an important service. It adds to our district. To ask these people to pay, uh, uh, so much money is, is ridiculous. I think it should be zero, but I, you know, if it's going to stay three, okay? And, uh, that's it.
Sure, please.
Chris, just, uh, I'm not really familiar with some of these other people seem to be experts with real estate in Sagem, but an RFP gets put out and we're gonna get responses from interested parties, right?
Yeah, correct.
Is the board obligated to, we'll have a new board and by the time the RFP comes back, when is the, what's? But we have, now we have a time limit on the RFP, is that normal?
So when you issue an RFP, you typically will put a date for responses for the people who are responding to.
Thirty days typical, what?
Not atypical. Um, I guess the issue, though, that we would need to discuss, and I would view it as something that is a hybrid of both general education as to the process, but also legal advice that I would have to advise you upon an executive session is that, you know, there's a difference between putting out an RFP and then accepting a proposal and undertaking action in further, in furtherance of it. So you can put out an RFP to say, people who are interested in either, as Phil has by motion and the board has supported, we wanna ask folks to bid and give us proposals for lease usage and for sale, that was the motion. And certainly can frame that. Um, but it does not oblige you upon receipt of those things to accept those or to act upon it. And what I would caution carefully is that if you're talking about, you know, either the lease or the sale, we would have to consider an existing relationship and the legalities of that, without me giving any particular legal advice as to what's going on. And then also, if you were to, under any circumstances, even if an existing relationship or an existing lease didn't exist, um, the proposition that there would be, uh, an ability for you to immediately sell property is something that I would say to you presents legal complexities that would be, um, insurmountable in a short period of time. The reason I say that is that while a central school district is entitled by law to sell property without going to the voters for approval, a union-free school district is not permitted to do that. Union-free school district has to put it up for a proposition. Um, there's a mechanism in the law for a group to petition to force the matter to a voter approval. So there is a petition process that the public could say, hey, before the, you as a central school district, and again, I'm talking about after you have received responses to an RFP and you are considering the information that you have received and decide to act upon it, and just make it very clear, the RFP does not result in a sale. The RFP does not result in a lease that just results in information being provided back for you, the board, to consider in furtherance of whatever it is that you see as appropriate usage for the property. And I'm speaking now to the sale, because this is something that, you know, it, it, just in, when we start talking about timeframes and things like that. Um, you know, the sale of real property by a school district requires and imposes upon a board some very significant obligations to ensure that you're getting fair market value, um, and there are myriad commissioners cases that talk about what you need to do to do that. And that's the reason that I say to you, the proposition that we would turn around you know, a contract for sale or an actual sale in a short period of time is something that I would just, I don't want to mislead anyone on any side of this conversation, I'm not picking sides, I'm not picking, um, you know, a, a political position on anything, but from a legal standpoint, um, I would counsel you, and I hope you trust my counsel, that that would be, um, in addition to being, uh, nigh on impossible time-wise, it would also be something that, um, would very likely present some real significant legal issues for you. Um, you know, by way of example, we would normally get appraisals, we would have an understanding of what fair market value is. You'd have a marketing strategy, you might have, you know, when we go out to sell property, you know, somebody who says, yeah, you should leave it up for a certain period of time to get maximum exposure, whatever it may be, and I know, we'll get into those things if ever the board decides it wants to sell property, but, um, the processes that would be required to show that the board with fidelity fulfilled its obligation to maximize the value in a sale, it would just be something that I would submit to you is not a quick turnaround type of item.
Perfect, Chris, that couldn't have been sub, uh, I think, Alex? Know, knowing that, we still have five votes, knowing what our council just told us.
Yeah, just, just before we go, I just wanna give Cam and Mackenzie a chance to leave, it's ten-thirty, I'm sorry, guys, please. And, and at any time, if you guys ever wanna leave and it's getting late, you can just go without our permission, please. Have a great day in school tomorrow, be careful going home, thank you, guys.
I have a question with Chris.
I'm sorry, just let Jimmy go first, I promise you, Jimmy, just ask again, please.
Oh, I'm not familiar with, so now that we just had, I think, an important interjection from our council about, in reference to the set, sale was part of Bill's motion, right? I don't wanna summarize what Chris has said, because it's almost an impossible thing to do, appraisals in thirty days, we're making a motion and they got five votes, right?
The RFP is different than the actual sale, and that's the distinction.
Everyone's still okay with just thirty days as part of, that's not an issue, okay, I was just making sure that was.
And I, I don't know what you'll get, and it, to be clear, the RFP doesn't bind the board to take action. You know, the board could receive.
It could be a rush, Chris, that's my only rush, and maybe something to do with the election, all right, thank you.
I, I don't wanna comment on that part of it, I'll just, in terms of legalities of it, that's.
Hold on one second, Meredith was next, I promise you can go ahead.
So Chris, just to be clear, if we were to go for a sale, because we are a school district, then it would be prudent for us to get fair market value, and there are all sorts of legalities in place to make sure that we are incurring fair market value, because again, our money is taxpayer money, and we're not supposed to just play around with it like it's monopoly money. So that happens in a sale, we have to make sure that we are getting fair market value. But as far as a lease or a rent or anything like that, there's no legalities in place, we could in fact rent these fields for anything.
There, there are, there are legalities in place, but the legalities as it pertains to a lot of this other. I'm very comfortable speaking to the board in public about generally applicable parts of the law. You know, a central school district may sell property without going to voter approval unless the voters, by ten percent of the voters, put it to a proposition and force it to a proposition, I'm very comfortable saying that a union-free school district doesn't have that. You know, the obligation of the board to get fair market value, as you've said, and what the mechanisms for that might be in terms of marketing it, and most importantly, if there were a challenge from the taxpayers, because there might be a right to do that, if you didn't fulfill what are demonstrable evidence of the attempt to get maximum value and assess the property fairly and so forth. You know, those are things that are the subject of myriad commissioners appeals, and when we're talking about sale, um, those complexities are really significant. When it comes to a discussion of, um, the existing leasehold relationship and the interplay of that relationship on either a proposed lease or sale, it doesn't prohibit you from going out to an RFP, it's not illegal for you to go out for an RFP. What you do upon the receipt of those proposals that you receive can very well be impacted by some of the things that I would prefer to discuss with you in executive session. You know, which could impact the decision-making that you would make in response to the receipt of those things. So gathering information, learning information, these are things that you can do. You could do it by appraisal, you could do it by talking to people, I, I'm not trying to mandate to you or dictate to you the manner by which you gather information to inform your decision-making, I will support whatever I can to give you information that you feel is necessary if it's within the power of my office and service to you. But when we get to the, sort of the rubber meets the road of now that we've got these things, what are we gonna do with them, what may we do with them? What are the legal issues that could impact our choices as we make these decisions? Those are things that I most certainly and desperately would want to discuss with you in exec session as opposed to out here in public.
Legally, the RFP doesn't have any effect on anything, really, it's just like if I wanna put my house on the market, I call in a realtor and ask you what it's worth before I even make the decision about putting it on the market.
You, you anticipated something that I actually was gonna mention, you know, you do have an existing relationship, and this is a matter of public record, because it's a contract that was approved with a real estate agent. Mr. O'Keefe and I, before the meeting today, just double-checked to see if JLL would have any kind of, um, rights to this, and this was not a, uh, the subject of your relationship with them was uh, pertaining to two forty-five Union Avenue and, and another property that didn't include the waiverly field, so. Um, but to your point, you know, a, a broker is sometimes a part of that discussion and relationship as well in terms of the marketing. The point of that whole discussion that I was making, Meredith, is that those are the things that a board would use to demonstrate to the commissioner of education if challenged by a taxpayer as to whether you proceeded properly in the decision to sell property, that you did it in a way that maximized the value, because that would be the responsibility in that sale. Um, and again, as to the particulars of how the existing leasehold relationship might affect, that's something I could certainly talk to you about in more detail in exec.
Okay, so I'm very confident then, after speaking with council, I'm still confident in my decision, thank you.
Chris, a couple of years ago, that we had the same conversation, seems like the same conversation going back around again, okay, and, and, and a couple of years, it was before you. Yeah, well, yeah, well, don't forget, you, you took my spot a few years ago, so you wouldn't have been on the board for that conversation.
Do us a favor, let's.
But if you can give some courtesy to board members when they speak, that'd be great, all right, so we don't cut you off, all right? Um, is that, that appraised value a couple of years back, it was around four and a half, four million dollars? Okay, and my understanding is.
I don't recall that, I apologize.
I could give you the, the, uh, documentation, is that we burned through four million dollars in two days of operation here in Sagem. So selling that twenty-four acres and taking that away from our kids, it would be a one-time revenue source that would be gone in two days in Sagem School District. And I think it's a force, so you wanna put an RFP out, right, though, to turn around and seriously think about selling that property? I think that's crazy for two-day revenue source.
The second discussion item is about facility use, Matthew went first. I don't know where everybody else is, we got a couple different things from Mr. O'Keefe in the last couple of weeks with Dr. Hope Harry.
Yeah, I'll just jump in for a second and say that we were asked to take a look at facilities, costs, outlays, what's going on with facilities, and so I, I did say to the board that, uh, upon arrival here in Sagem, I found that, uh, our buildings were unlocked on the weekends, people were let in, and then we drove off, and then we came back several hours later and locked the doors and, and, or you locked them while they were in there. But, uh, long story short, I understand that there's no security in the buildings and no, and no custodials and custodial staff in the buildings on the weekends. So that's obviously a concern to me. Uh, I found it unusual that we would unlock the doors, leave, and then I know we're leaving our, our good people in those buildings, but I still feel like we should have security and we should have custodial staff, especially in these times, uh, to clean up, uh, before kids come in on Monday morning. So that, when we talk about a recommendation or something that I'm gonna bring up, I, I think that when there is no security and there is no custodial in these buildings and we give them out to our community or, or have them used by our community, that we have security and custodial there. What we charge for that, again, that is something that the board can, can decide, whether it's three dollars or eighteen dollars or six dollars or nine dollars or four dollars or five dollars. Again, uh, whatever it is that the board wants to do there, but my concern is that we have no staff in the building whatsoever, and that to me seems like a, a liability.
Alex?
Please, Jim, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, just, just one quick statement, uh, on the waiverly thing, and then I'll leave that alone. Uh, I'll repeat what I said when I voted for it, yeah, I don't see any downside whatsoever in an RFP. Uh, now, back to the facilities fees, uh, my position is rather simple, I wrote some notes down here. And the position is this, we should have security in any building that's open to the public, that's a period. We have an obligation to protect our students and property, we have security guards in every building during the school day to protect our students. Why would we abandon security in after-hour facilities use? The safety obligation to our students, visitors, as well as our property, doesn't end with the school bell. We've been very lucky in the past, you're right, we did not have security in all these events, but that is just being lucky. We cannot run a district based on luck, or by expecting someone else to perform security duties like the guests or custodians. The bottom line is, I support whatever fee will cover the expenses of security and custodial services. Uh, now, we do have a whole list of different options here, so I'm not jumping ahead of anybody to say I choose one over the other, but I will say that I'll only choose the, uh, proposal A, which includes security and custodial. And any one of those versions, or maybe a version somebody else has, as long as it includes security and custodial.
Anyone else?
So on your, your, your proposal with thirty-two hour, thirty-two thousand hours or whatever it was of, of, uh, time that was permitted, that nineteen dollars an hour is indoor use only?
No, no, I took the entire thirty-two, um, thousand eight hundred hours of facilities use that we averaged out over a two-year lookback period. And since we currently have a three-dollar-an-hour flat rate, I just took what would be the increased cost if we went with the superintendent's recommendation of the security and the custodial, and just did pure math of dividing the dollar amount by the number of hours, that's where nineteen comes from.
So, so, so if we had a Little League baseball game going on, we're gonna put a security guard and custodian out there? They would be on a hook at nineteen dollars an hour?
I would think you'd only have, uh, a custodian in the building if you were allowing building access.
So my question is nineteen-dollar hour proposal, is it just indoor building use or is it for outdoor building use then?
No, again, again, that, that's not really my proposal, that's the simple math of what it would cost.
So everybody, every permit would, would yield nineteen.
Just, just like you pay three dollars an hour now universally, whether you're inside the building, using facilities, and requiring cleanup, or if you're a group that comes to the field and never comes into the building, those two groups right now pay three dollars an hour. My simple math was just saying, if you wanted to go with that proposal and you wanted it to be covered by facilities use fees, the fee you would need to charge is nineteen dollars an hour. You could still charge three dollars an hour and prove the superintendent's recommendation of those additional expenses. You just have to understand that the district is footing that cost, that's all.
So once again, I mean, you would have a, a two-hour practice outside, and then we rent those fields for nineteen dollars an hour. And the justification would be the security charging and.
The board sets the fee, I just gave you.
I'm talking about the superintendent's proposal.
The man.
Yeah. Thank you.
Please.
So I guess it would be fair to say that you're saying the three-dollar-an-hour fee that we're currently giving to everybody regardless of indoor or outdoor use of facilities or not, custodial or not, you're saying that we're going to share in the nineteen-dollar fee just the same way, just like every single taxpayer would share in the six-hundred-thousand-dollar fee if we didn't increase to the nineteen-dollar-an-hour fee. So we're, we're, we're semantically sitting here arguing that it's not fair to this one group, but it's not fair to that group, when it's really not fair to the entire Sagem community for them to pick up the slack of others. But we're gonna, we're not comfortable charging nineteen dollars an hour to everybody regardless of their use.
Yeah.
Because we wanna charge six-hundred-thousand dollars to all of our taxpayers.
Do you know how many for just indoor, how many hours?
I'd have to go back and look at all the permits.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, the, through the week use, I did a similar analysis, um, I, I'm sorry if it was the gentleman from Saeg or this gentleman from SYSL. Um, our permit use is eighty-five percent weekdays, fifteen percent weekends, which is very similar to their own analysis. Um, the, the math is there, the majority of weekday permits are indoor permits. Um, because the outdoors are typically used by our athletic department, they're basically using our cafeterias, our gyms, the boy scout group, maybe it's a classroom, things of that nature.
No, Laura, please.
Um, so I guess my question is, John, when you gave us the breakdown of all other districts, and most other districts have, uh, a separate fee for custodial or security if they're charging zero dollars an hour, it's only zero dollars an hour if it's no cost to the district in most cases. But are other districts having custodial or security, like now during COVID, I can't picture not having a custodian come in and follow COVID cleaning protocol before we would have our staff and students come into the building the next morning. I don't, you know, I appreciate, you know, as part of a booster club, we used to use the cafeteria, and we did a good job cleaning, I just don't know that I would clean the way a custodian is trained to clean. So do most other districts have custodial security? Or do they just let people in their buildings? And I'm still confused about how the groups. Are getting into the buildings if we have nobody in them.
Well, as for the fees, unfortunately, there's no consistency in how different districts do it. You know, so you you may have a district like Bayport that has a very comprehensive. Facility use fee chart and rate schedule and openly never charges anything. Unsimilarly that that way in hop on. Then you'll have other districts that through the week, if it is a youth community group. They will not charge any fee at all if the building is used during the weekdays and there is no cost to the district, so. Boy Scouts come in and they use the cafeteria for a two hour meeting or a three hour meeting. Or maybe a youth basketball group uses the gym for two or three hours. And the custodians are already there and they're gonna clean behind them, so the group leaves early enough. That there's sufficient time for them to clean behind them. That group might not pay anything. But then maybe the the boy scouts come in and it's Friday night and they're having a spaghetti fundraiser and they use the cafeteria. And they serve food for a couple of hours in the cafeteria and they tidy up after themselves. But in a case like that, a district may come in and say, you know, no, our custodian is going to come in. Behind you, an additional custodian over above what the building has and say there's a three hour overtime charge. That you'll pay for that use, so you'll pay nothing for the actual building use. But you'll need to incur, you know, whatever three hours of custodial time is. Or I've had other, because I interviewed each of these districts over the last two weeks when I recreated the Ingram and memo. So if you have a group that's having a Little League softball game outside. And it's just the kids and the coach and a couple of moms and dads, no big deal. If it's a larger game where maybe there's now spectators and there's fifty or a hundred people there. A lot of districts depending upon the number of participants will require a security guard. Again, at a nominal rate, whatever, twenty five dollars an hour, thirty five dollars an hour.
Well, I see.
It's very, very different. So there's there's no consistency on what district do, which. Really means the board has the autonomy to make any decision that they want on what the fee would be.
Right, because again, I see like even with middle country, so they require if you're using their outside fields. That you have a security guard and it goes by however many number of people. Will depend on how many number of guards you have at a cost of a hundred and thirty dollars per hour. So I would think some of these districts that are charging the cost per hour of a custodian or a security guard at those rates. Would be cost prohibitive for our youth groups versus trying to be fair and equitable and spread the cost. Over everybody if we decide that security and custodial is needed. And again, during COVID, I can't picture not having a custodian come in and clean after a group. But that's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
I just, you know, before we go out and we vote on nineteen dollars an hour. I really think that we should look at other solutions of being able to do this at a lower rate. You know, sixty five dollars an hour for custodian, thirty five dollars an hour custodian. Understand it, when you do this, okay, when the board nine does this, we pass that 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 cost onto our taxpayer. So instead of, and I don't know, my children don't play basketball, but if it's a hundred and eighty dollars a year, it's gonna go up to three or four hundred dollars a year. That's what's going to happen. It's gonna hit our taxpayers, they're harder in the pocket to use their own facilities. You know, and I just, once again, I just, I don't understand that if youth organizations are providing a service for our kids. Why we want to continuously go after, you know, that hundred and thirty dollars, which could turf, is that correct?
Middle country is turf.
Country was turf, the use of turf fields.
Right, and that's like the same, Rob, like SSC is paying the fees at PAL. I'm not sure of all the fees. I know I saw them on one of the memos here and of course now I can't find it. But I think it was like a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. Per field or I'm not exactly, like I said, I can't unfortunately find the memo in front of me. But so they are paying like higher fees there. And I I don't, you know, I haven't had a kid play in a long time, so I I'm like the old. You know, person that we talked about that doesn't have kids in school anymore paying taxes, but. I'm just thinking that. You know, so right now SSC is paying what they're paying at PAL. And then other groups here are paying the three dollars an hour, but then if we have the custodians and security come in. Then we're going to be absorbing somewhere five or six hundred thousand dollars.
That's that's the that's what the platinum plan is. So so but the thing is, the thing is that here's the problem you have. You have taxpayers, okay, who want to get their children into sports, okay, and I'll just say this, you know. They're willing to pay eighty five dollars to put their child in soccer because it's their first year, they don't know if they're gonna like it. Okay, but all of a sudden that soccer cost turns into four hundred and twenty dollars a year. They're not gonna put their child in soccer. They're not gonna spend four hundred and twenty dollars, okay, or or three hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, to put their their child, this is an exorbitant cost to the taxpayer.
And I and I agree with you, but if I'm a taxpayer that chooses to put my kid in SSC. And they're paying a hundred and thirty dollars an hour for a field, are my fees gonna be more because I'm choosing?
My comment's not specific to sockets, specific to every organization that's out there.
Oh, no, and I'm agreeing with you.
Basketball for science. You know, the problem that you're gonna have, and I don't know what it costs, it is a hundred and eighty dollars, it's gonna jump to four hundred dollars. And that's gonna direct.
What I'm saying is if if we take, and and maybe it does require a further discussion. But i- if other groups and other districts and SSC and whoever is paying different amounts all over the place. And other groups and other districts are paying for zero dollars, but they're paying to cover a custodian or zero dollars, but they're paying to cover a security guard. Then, you know, you have to look at the number of kids that are registering and whether it was Mr. Brown or I've got. The other gentleman who spoke from Syag, maybe they are paying for too much gym fees, maybe they're. Blocking out all these hours and paying for all these hours and maybe they're not using all those hours. And that's off the bat, they're paying too much. And and so if they limit the hours that they're using to what they're, you know, the permits to what they're actually using. Then that savings might be the savings that we're talking about that covers a custodian.
But I but I'd like to see is that we table this. Further discussion now that it's almost eleven, but I I'd like to sit down with these groups. You know, I know that they reached out to other people on this board for a conversation. And I was the only one that showed up with it, and I know that other people were reached out to. Not not everybody.
I felt it was inappropriate for any board member to be there and by themselves, so that. For any board member to be at that place at that time last night. When Syag had a meeting in their Little Red House, I thought it was very inappropriate for me as a board member to be there by myself.
What meeting was that? I didn't get.
Had a meeting, an emergency meeting of their board last night at the Little Red House and they asked me to attend and I said. I felt it was, I I didn't see it say I felt it was appropriate. I said, I will have to get back to you on that.
Did anybody else?
And because I felt it was inappropriate for a board member to be at that meeting, but apparently according to Mr. Piccirillo, he attended the meeting.
I did.
Who else got invites? Who else got invites? Just out of curiosity?
I don't know, but here here's what I'll say. Here here's what I'll say. I just went just to hear what they had to say because I think it's important, just like we had the reopening meeting and we pressured the cabinet to say. Sit down with every stakeholder, sit down with the teachers, sit down with the custodians, sit down with the nurses. Well, why aren't we sitting down and doing our due diligence with the taxpayers? That's who we represent.
Chris, is that not what public board meetings are for?
Just a minute, just a minute. I I I promise you can answer it in just a second. But I feel, and it could be my personal feeling, that sitting down at a meeting just to hear people's opinion. Is better than reading them on social media when there are older disgruntled board members giving opinions. About when they didn't fix something while they were here on Sagem Moms. So if you're gonna sit on Sagem Moms and read and comment, then I can show up. And listen to taxpayers about how they just, all they do, all they want to do is sit down and say, hey, can we come up with a more equitable decision? So that they don't hurt the kids, so that one kid doesn't say, I can't afford it, or two kids or three kids or four kids. And they don't, and they get stuck and they feel that, that's that's all they want.
And I feel that that's what we use a public board meeting for, not a private. Meeting behind closed doors that some board members were invited to and some weren't.
The door was wide open.
And did how many, how many members knew about it?
And they all showed up here tonight because nobody's hiding anything.
Now, the point is, the point is, if I may, just for a second, the point is this. That I don't have any problem with the group sitting down amongst themselves and working out what they think is a fair deal. And then coming back to the board and say, and to negotiate to say, hey, look, we heard your concerns about security, about custodial. And we know that three dollars an hour can't stay, so here's some ideas we came up with together. But I definitely don't think board members should be involved in any of those decisions until they. As a group alone, without any influence from any of us. Do what I I I think Rob was saying all along, let them get together and come up with an equitable. Fee schedule that maybe we could all agree at, maybe we'd all surprise each other and all agree.
I I'm fine with, first of all, there was twelve people and I didn't speak. But I'm fine with letting them speak. And coming up with equitable solutions and ideas that maybe we can agree on before we vote on raising it. And then changing it down the line. There's no reason to. Let's all do it now, but let's just table it. And allow them to to get back down and and come up with what's fair. If it's fair to us on the board.
I agree with that too, Alex.
So so that's the motion I'll make. I'm gonna motion to table changing any fees for facility use. Second by Meredith, all in favor? Opposed?
Can I weigh in just briefly? Because I think I was asked a question.
I'm sorry.
I don't, no, I don't want to leave it unanswered. If somebody was expecting an answer, I didn't want to leave that hanging. So you as board members and elected officials, just like other politicians, you know, and and elected officials are entitled to interact with your constituents. There is no prohibition against you meeting and speaking to individuals who may have, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, whether you ultimately. What you're not allowed to do is take confidential board information and share it with those groups. What you're not allowed to do is to represent that you are in some way individually able to bind the board to a certain position. But you're not deprived of your right of your franchise to having, you know, to vote a certain way, to have an opinion, to express your opinion, to support. You know, I mean, there's a lot of even, you know, we we dealt with this, if you want to take it to an extreme analogy. When Sheldon Silver as the, you know, head of the Assembly was was indicted, there were a lot of charges that were thrown out because they said, hey, those things constitute constituent service. And if we're gonna criminalize constituent service, we're not gonna have the political system that we know it in this democracy, so. There, just to be clear, it it is not a conflict of interest for any of you to have. An opinion about something that you're ultimately gonna vote on, and in fact, in in the history of this organization and others. You know, people come out of the PTA or Syag or SYSL or something like that, and it's not a problem for you to be tied, you know, emotionally, philosophically. You know, personally or otherwise with those groups, so that it's not, and I don't want there to be any aspersions cast on anybody's attendance at a meeting where it gets complicated sometime. Is where the, you know, perhaps a majority of the board attends as a, almost like a representative body of the board and starts making. You know, at least even the appearance that in some way we've got a quorum of the board acting on behalf of the board in not a public meeting. So we'd have to be careful about that. My recommendation certainly would be if there's a, you know, a a a specific discussion or negotiation that the board wanted to hear or something like that, that you task. A committee of you perhaps, but in your private lives, in your personal positions, if a group of you went to the same place. To hear what somebody had to say and to think about what they're saying and have that inform your decision making. You're not precluded from doing that. I just want to make sure that we, you know, careful, and I'll happily advise, you know, I've had the benefit of a relationship with each board member. And on occasion, each of you at some, for some reason or another has called me directly and say, hey, I just wanna. I'm thinking about doing this, but I just wanted to kick it around with you a little bit. I have those conversations with board members on Sundays at night, a lot of them are in my living room, my house. And I never. Regret it and I never resent it. Sometimes I gotta balance it with my family time. Because my goal is always to give you the best advice I can and keep you out of trouble, but I want to make it clear that attendance at a meeting like that is not a pro. There's not a prohibition against it.
So I just want to be clear because I adore Syag. My children all grew up in Syag. And the person that's on the Syag board that did reach out to me is probably one of the most upstanding people that this community has ever seen. He volunteers tons of his time. He's a wonderful human being. However. With not backpedaling at all, however, with him turning around and blindsiding me and telling me something that was gonna be on the agenda. When it wasn't actually on the agenda yet, means that somebody was going back and giving information to others that shouldn't have been giving information to others.
Just a minute. I haven't touched the agenda. This is now the second time and now everyone on YouTube can now know. If you're gonna say something, you have, you you guys aren't entitled to your own facts. Like you you have to get on board here. I haven't touched this, okay? So for the record, showing up to the Little Red House, legal or illegal for me to do? Please wait. For Sagem Moms and anybody else who wants to cast dispositions tonight on social media, did I do anything wrong?
Your personal attendance, and I'm not just talking about you and everybody, was not a, you know, a violation of your oath or a violation of the law or a violation of. You know, any constraint that you operate under as a as a board member, that you're allowed to attend meetings of. Community groups.
I think it was a yes and no.
Just a yes or no.
Alright, so you it is not a violation of law.
Good. Chris, Mr. Dr. Paul Terry. Yeah, have I added anything on this since the Friday packet, before the Friday packet came out?
We were going to discuss Waverly Fields and and facilities for some time now. It's been on the agenda for some time.
And we started talking about it last meeting, so. So you're wrong and I didn't blindside you. The only person that was blindsided was me by Bill's grandstand tonight or or his speech or whatever you want to call it. I didn't know that was coming, but I haven't touched it. So two times tonight, you've cast a dispersion that I've done something inappropriate and you're wrong.
I'm not saying.
So for Sagem Moms and everybody else, I am the most upstanding. I'm not lying to anybody. I let everybody speak. I want everybody to not speak over each other. I want everyone to not interrupt each other. That's the most fair person in the room. And I I I'm sorry, Meredith, and you know that I like you, but that's the wrong thing to do to 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 even attempt. To splat someone's character in a public session. You did it twice just now.
Went to the meeting. I said for myself, I felt it was inappropriate.
But were you saying that? That's an indication of saying that it's inappropriate for me. It's not, it's not inappropriate. For you, for Jimmy, for Rob, for Bill, for anybody.
If five of us had shown up, then what would have happened?
I'd be worried about a quorum of the board if there was a participation in discussion about an issue of public concern and you're, you know. In attendance, watching, hearing, taking notes, that sort of thing. I would, you know, I don't think that's a problem, but if you're talking about interacting and expressing opinion, the appearance of a quorum of the board at a meeting like that. When it potentially implicates decision making you're making in a public thing, I caution against that kind of.
And for the public, that did not happen, so so everybody knows.
Yeah, Alex, to the record, we should, I think we, I didn't know about that meeting. I wasn't invited to it. So I think we should make it clear that like there wasn't a group that were invited to this secret meeting.
I I it wasn't, just so everybody knows, it wasn't secret. The door was open, there was cars there, the lights were on, everything, the windows were open, it was COVID friendly. Let's just, you know, just so everybody knows what it was. The next meeting. Well, actually, does anybody have any future agenda items other than this as we move forward? Hopefully you guys can get together before. Wednesday, April seventh is our next meeting, so maybe if you guys can sit down and and give us a proposal. Of what you think is fair for you and the taxpayer and and the board can maybe agree upon, that would be tremendous. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be Wednesday, April seventh, two thousand twenty one at seven thirty PM, right here in the annex. I have a motion and a second to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations. Motion by Matthew, second by Rob, all in favor? Good night, everyone.
I only knew three names, three names on point. I'm sorry, I don't know everybody. I only know three people, so when I spoke with Fred, I actually, he would reach out.